I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Hold on, Jeremy.
One second.
One second, Jeremy.
One second.
Give us one moment.
We'll let you know in just a minute, okay?
Good morning. Today is...
Just give us a moment. We're just gonna start in a little... What is his name?
Jeremy.
Hi, Jeremy. Welcome. We're just gonna take a few minutes. Can we...
Go ahead, Jessica.
One second. Today is Monday, November 15, 2021. Commissioners Court is meeting in regular open session. Commissioner Olgin, would you like to introduce our Pledge of Allegiance student?
Yes, thank you, Jessica. This morning, I am very happy to announce that we have Jeremy Ortega with us. He is a seventh grader at Eastwood Middle School, and he will be leading us in the pledge. Good morning, Jeremy. How are you this morning?
I'm doing good, and you?
I'm doing great. We are ready to begin when you are. Thank you.
Jeremy, we are ready. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you for your enthusiasm. You looked at some quickly there. Thank you. You have a wonderful day.
Thank you. And now, we will receive an invocation from Pastor Michael Grady.
Good morning. Let us borrow his for a word of prayer. Father, we bless you again for the privilege of coming into your presence on today to discuss the business of this auspicious body. We thank you for the Judge and for all of the commissioners. Give us grace and wisdom as we navigate these most difficult and challenging times. Be our guide as we make decisions that affect the lives of so many. Watch over us as we walk the city streets, as we purview the land, as we recognize the need and sense of urgency. For the time is now that we continue to battle for the soul of the nation and the heart of our community. We bless you. We honor you. We magnify your name, Father, always. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you for being with us and everything you do in our community.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you for invocation on Veterans Day as well. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Peace.
Today, we are joined by ASL interpreters Dario Garcia and Bianca Garcia. Judge, would you like to make some comments before we begin?
Yeah, just wanna welcome everyone here to Commissioners Court. We've got some excellent resolutions that are coming up, and we always appreciate an audience for those resolutions. And, you know, thank you for being part of our process, our government process. And myself, on behalf of the commissioners, we're always very glad to have this type of participation. We will be having, just to let everyone know, we will have a special session on the 18th, which is this Thursday. And then, our last session for the year will be December 6th. So just so that the public will know that we have two more sessions before the year ends. And trying to do our best to... Our county employees have worked extremely hard, so we're trying to see if we could give them a little bit of a break just so that we can start the year off refreshed and ready to go into 2022. So, once again, thank you for being with us, and we hope you enjoy the rest of the meetings. Thank you.
Item number four is the Consent Agenda, composed of items 4A through 4AD. At the request of the HR Department, we'd like to pull item 4K for further discussion. Are there any other items members of the court or public would like to pull?
Commissioners? If not, move to approve with that... And without that item from HR.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 5A, Resolutions. Approve and adopt a resolution declaring November 20, 2021 as National Transgender Day of Remembrance in El Paso County, Texas.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I have the honor of reading this resolution into the record, and I believe we may have some folks on the line to comment afterward. And so, we'll allow that to happen. But I'm honored to be able to read this. So, "Whereas, the Borderland Rainbow Center in El Paso, Texas recognizes the violence and challenges faced by the transgender community and the nation every day, particularly transgender women of color. And whereas, there is a long history of violence targeting the transgender community and women of color, much of which goes unreported or inaccurately reported. And whereas, transgender women of color are most likely to experience violence, including in prisons and immigration detention facilities. And whereas, this year, there were at least 45 known transgender people killed in the United States, 32 of whom were people of color. And whereas, discriminatory attitudes toward the transgender community and women of color foster high rates of violence, homelessness, and economic instability. And whereas, the members of the transgender community and women of color who do not have access to safe education, employment, and housing due to lack of availability, targeted support programs, or training, are forced into situations that put them in vulnerable positions. And whereas, our county must ensure anti-discriminatory employment practices and promote policies for accepting inclusive environments. And whereas, it is essential to develop policies that support the transgender community, develop public education to dispel myths, and to humanize transgender people. Now therefore, be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and the Commissioners Court that November 20 shall be known as National Transgender Day of Remembrance. Sign this 15th day of November, 2021."
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I believe we have some folks on the line. I see Adri Perez. Adri, would you like to start, please?
Hi. Well, thank you so much for voting on this already and for passing it. But good morning, Commissioners and Judge. My name is Adri Perez. I am a proud lifelong El Pasoan, and I have the honor of being the Policy and Advocacy Strategist for LGBTQIA+ Equality for the ACLU of Texas. Thank you so much for considering this important resolution and also for inviting me to speak. This has been a really long year for trans rights across the country, not just in Texas. Legislatures in more than 35 states have aggressively targeted trans communities by attempting to limit youth access to sports, by attempting to limit access for youth to gender-affirming life-saving care, and by attempting to take kids with gender-affirming parents from their homes. But Texas alone actually accounted for more than a quarter of all of the anti-trans bills filed in 2021. And for 10 long months, transgender people, including kids from El Paso and their parents, showed up time and time again at the Capitol to testify in defense of their humanity. And that's why Trans Awareness Week this year, I think, is more important than ever. The week runs from today, or from November 13, which was on Saturday, to November 19, which is on Friday, and ends on November 20 with Transgender Day of Remembrance, a time when we remember and mourn our trans siblings whose lives were lost to violence. This year has resulted in more cases of anti-trans violence in schools, including El Paso, and in a record number of murders of trans women of color and other trans individuals across the country, with Texas leading the nation. And I want to make a point right now in this meeting that El Paso was not exempt to that. In 2015, we lost Erica Ticharina, who was a trans woman who was murdered and lost her life due to violence in El Paso. And I think on this day, I always want to make it a point to remember her. And so, we need this week to make space for our community and uplift not only those harms and not only the hurt that is felt by the community across the country right now, but to also uplift our joy and our truth and our inherent goodness. This week is about celebrating the power and love and resilience that all trans people hold to build a better, gender-affirming world, one free from discrimination and attacks at the social, political, and legal level. Thank you so much for considering this resolution and for honoring the lives of transgender people in El Paso.
Thank you for being with us and also for that awareness. I think it's very important that we're aware of these, you know, testimonials that help us become more accepting. So, we thank you for being here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Adri, for your words and for all of your advocacy as well. Not just for the LGBTQIA+ community, but just for El Pasoans in general. I don't know... I thought I saw somebody from the...
I believe they logged off, Commissioner.
Okay.
Just as Mr. Perez was finishing.
Okay. Well, I mean, I just wanted to say that... Say thank you to the Borderland Rainbow Center for helping my office put this resolution together. You know, I wanted to bring this resolution forward because I think that we're well past the time where it's okay to hate someone for who they are in America. It is unconstitutional to use a power of government against people who may be different from the majority in some way. And sadly, as reported by El Paso Matters during the legislative session, and Adri touched on this a little bit, in the first months of 2021 of this year, we saw more anti-transgender legislation introduced around the country than any other year in the United States. And Texas even more sadly led the way. In El Paso, I think we're making a statement that love is love and that we do not favor discrimination against people because of who they are. And I'm glad that we were able to hear this resolution and glad to be able to provide a platform for speakers like Adri, who are brave enough to share their stories and their information in their hearts. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner, for this resolution. Jessica?
Item 5B. Approve and adopt a resolution proclaiming November 21, 2021 as World Day of Remembrance for the victims of traffic violence in El Paso County, Texas, and expressing support for Vision Zero principles.
Good morning again. I also have the honor of reading this resolution into the record and sponsoring this resolution. I know that we also have some folks here in the audience to speak afterward. I'll go ahead and read it, and then we will hear from them. So, "Whereas, traffic injuries are the leading killer worldwide of people aged 5 to 29 years old. And whereas, despite dramatic drops in miles driven in 2020 due to the pandemic, it is estimated that as many as 42,060 people died in the United States in traffic crashes last year, a dramatic increase of 24% over traffic deaths in 2019. And whereas, an estimated 4.8 million additional roadway users were seriously injured in crashes in 2020 at an estimated cost to society of $474 billion. And whereas, every day, an average of 10 people die in the Texas transportation system, while here in El Paso County, Texas Department of Transportation crash records indicate that 84 people were killed and an estimated 203 people seriously injured in traffic crashes in 2020. And based on National Safety Council estimates, these traffic crashes resulted in more than $750 million in economic damages. And whereas, the Texas Transportation Commission in August announced a new task force to be comprised of representatives from the Texas Department of Transportation and the state's metropolitan planning organizations to further identify and fund safety projects from funding allocated to MPOs throughout the state with a relentless focus on reducing the number of fatalities on Texas highways. And whereas, the World Day of Remembrance is an international event started in 2005, honoring the 1.35 million killed and millions more injured in the world's roads each year, and organizing for change to prevent such tragedies. And the U.S. World Day of Remembrance is led by members of Families for Safe Streets, FSS, individuals who have been injured or lost loved ones in traffic crashes, working to confront traffic violence in communities in the U.S., and the Vision Zero Network, a national advocacy group working for safe mobility for all, partnering with local and state-level street safety advocates, faith leaders, community members, elected officials, and dignitaries from across the nation. And whereas, local advocacy groups and government agencies are also actively involved in organizing events around the country. And in Texas, advocates plan a virtual vigil and workshop with groups in El Paso hosting an online participation hub. And whereas, the county of El Paso recognizes the high cost in lives, injuries, and economic losses to the victims and their families, and the role El Paso County can play to support efforts to end traffic deaths and serious injuries. And now therefore, be it resolved that the El Paso County Commissioners Court hereby names November 21 World Day of Remembrance for the victims of traffic violence in El Paso and commits to support efforts to reduce traffic death and injury. Sign this 15th day of November, 2021."
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we do have Mr. Scott White here to speak on this resolution.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Judge.
Welcome.
I thank you for reading this resolution into the record today because it is important that we do recognize the toll that traffic crashes and traffic violence take on the... Bring out for the families in our community and across the nation, and in fact, across the world. Over 1.3 million people die annually in traffic crashes. That's equal... When you pare it down, 84 people in El Paso doesn't seem like much. But to the families of those victims and to those people who were actually killed or injured, that is a huge difference. And we need to take this time to recognize that we can improve the systems so that we don't have to continue this ongoing tragedy, so that families each year don't have to repeat the loss and the suffering that we've seen for decades. Texas has not seen a day without a traffic death in 20 years. Texas tells us that we need to end the streak. We can end the streak by starting here in El Paso County, by adopting Vision Zero policies, by working with the MPO, by working with the city, by working with all the small communities within the county, to adopt policies for safer streets, to make sure when people are driving, they're safe; people who are walking, riding bikes, using transit, that they're safe and they get to their destination each and every day. We can end traffic violence, just as Texas and Texas dot has committed to do by 2050, if we adopt Vision Zero policies and work to put them in place to make sure everyone who uses the Texas transportation system, who travels on our city roads, our county roads, and roads developed by Texas dot, that they are safe as well. We want everyone to be safe and ensure that this is not the kind of tragedy that any one of us ever has to deal with again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. White? You're from the White House, right?
That's what the message is on the home phone at the house.
Those don't know, there's a standing joke that we have with his mom... His mom is Pat White. And we call the house, he answer the phone, "This is Pat White. You just called the White House." And some of them think it's the real White House. It is the real White House, but not the one that...
It is, yes, sir.
It wasn't, no. Tell the White House I said, "Thank you," and appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if there's anybody else on line, Jessica, or if we have anybody else.
We don't see anybody else, Commissioner.
Okay. I just wanted to make just a couple more comments. You know, the resolution, you know, laid out some important facts about roadway safety, but I want to say a little bit more about people who walk and bike. According to a report in August from KFOC, fatalities from traffic crashes involving pedestrians and bicyclists are on the rise and now account for 1 in 5 of all traffic deaths in Texas. Last year, 731 people died in a pedestrian-related crash, and another 82 were killed in crashes involving bicyclists, according to data that's from... That's collected from Texas Peace Officers Crash Report. In the El Paso District in 2020, there were 127 crashes involving pedestrians, including 14 deaths and 19 serious injuries that report shows. And there are 46 traffic crashes involving cyclists, resulting in 2 deaths and 4 serious injuries. And, you know, I'm reading the language the media used, which came from Texas dot language. And I'm not particularly fond of calling traffic deaths involving pedestrians or bicyclists crashes, but, you know, that makes it sound like two equal forces colliding. But, you know, the onus is not on pedestrians or bicyclists. When we're in a car, we're the ones that are wielding the potentially deadly force, and it's up to us as drivers to be more aware of bikers and pedestrians and with other drivers. You know, you heard the stats in the resolution about road safety or the lack thereof. The last day without a traffic death on Texas roadways was 21 years ago on November 7. I think we can do much better. And I'm glad that we had Mr. White here to speak on behalf of Villa El Paso and folks and share some ideas. So, thank you very much for helping us bring awareness to this.
Judge?
Yes, Commissioner Leon?
Thank you, Mr. White, for bringing this up. Commissioner Stout? As some of you may know, I'm an avid bicycle rider. This is not a result of riding a bike. It's a result of getting old. But I've gotta say that a lot of times, I mean, many, many times, as I'm riding out there, a car will narrowly miss me, and they're texting. And that's becoming even more dangerous than DWI's. So, I appreciate what you're doing, and hopefully, the public will see this and keep it in the back of their mind as they drive around our city streets. So, again, thank you for bringing it back to our consciousness.
Yeah, and thank you for elaborating on, you know, the 84, but the impact on the family that it takes. And then, of course, if, you know, we're safe and you're not texting, and, you know, also the collateral impact on law enforcement of trying to be out there. And, you know, Commissioner Olgin, myself, and Norma Velazos from Public Works, we're at MPO, and we always, you know, you have alerted us, Mr. White, that, you know, we have to be very conscientious about any decision we make, that it includes a safety. And as we're trying harder and harder to make sure that people ride bikes and that there's opportunities to walk in our community, that makes it especially important that the safety is the main thing as we move forward. So, once again, thank you for being with us, and thank you, Commissioner Stout, for this resolution. Jessica?
Item 5C. Approve and adopt a resolution declaring December 4, 2021 as Buy El Paso Day in El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you, Jessica, and obviously, very important to all of us. And we're very glad to... We're gonna hear from Mary Beth. And so, I just wanna... It's my honor and privilege to read the resolution into the record. Whereas highlighting, supporting, and celebrating local small businesses in our community has never been more important. And whereas, the holiday shopping season is critical for small businesses in El Paso, many of which have endured and innovated to survive a period of unprecedented challenges. Whereas Buy El Paso is an initiative of the Better Business Bureau, the City of El Paso and the County of El Paso that educates and promotes buying local to engage our local economy. Whereas Buy El Paso organizes special activities and promotions that highlight local businesses and encourage patrons to buy local this holiday season. Now therefore, be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court that December 4, 2021 will be declared as Buy El Paso Day. Sign this 15th day of November, 2021. Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mary Beth, you wanna come up? And I just wanna sort of preface that, you know, how important it is that the pandemic was really difficult on businesses in our community. We're in a much better situation now, but there's still those collateral impacts that we have. And we know that stimulating the economy locally is going to be very important as we move forward. People do better. We feel better, you know, when the economy is going right. And so, it'll be some challenges. So, I know the kind of loyalty that our community has, and we want to rally around what you're gonna hear today. Go ahead, Mary Beth.
Thank you. Mary Beth Stevens with the Better Business Bureau. First of all, I just want to thank the Commissioners Court for the support you have shown small businesses in our community, always, but in particular, through the pandemic and going forward. As you're very well aware, when the pandemic hit and there were CARES funds available, the Commissioners Court participated in helping us promote this program, develop and promote the Buy El Paso program. It's just been a little bit over a year. It feels like it's been about many, many more years than that because we've had the opportunity to do so many different things. In general, as you know, we support small businesses that may not have the resources to promote themselves as well as they should, and giving the El Paso community the opportunity to learn about these businesses and support them. So, we've seen great success doing that. Part of that is having different activities and opportunities to showcase these businesses. So, last year, we started the first Buy El Paso Day to celebrate the shopping... So, last year, we started the first Buy El Paso Day to celebrate the shopping season, which is, as you mentioned, so critically important to small businesses. And so, this year, December 4th will be officially Buy El Paso Day, but the whole week before that, leading up to it, will be filled with activities and promotions that will be able to showcase so many of our amazing small businesses and give our local community and consumers the opportunity to have a little extra fun shopping with them, trying to just bring it local wherever we can, so, and also giving the opportunity to explore some areas, particularly in the outlying areas of the county, featuring those businesses that may not have gotten too much attention before. So, it's a win-win on everybody's side. I know people in the community are so happy to learn about these businesses and support them, and so, it's been doing great. That week, one of the activities, the primary activity, is, I left you all a picture of these gigantic piñatas. These piñatas are going, there's, I think we have 32 of them. Each day, at least 20 businesses, I think it's going to be more than that, but we'll have a piñata at their site. There'll be promotions involved for people who go to those stores and businesses, get their picture taken with them, and then they'll be included in raffles to do, for all sorts of locally-produced products and services. So, it's going to be really fun, generate excitement, and have a little bit more fun with the holiday shopping. Then, I leave this in particular for you, because at the end of the week, we, last week, had the light bulb went on and thought, "This will be an amazing opportunity to support our local nonprofits who work with children." So, the Better Business Bureau will recollect all of the piñatas in our gigantic U-Haul that we've rented for this, because they're so large, we realized our trucks didn't even work for this. We'll fill them up, and then we'll be distributing them to local nonprofits who work with children, local organizations. So, for each of you, if you have organizations in your community, I think we have at least 30 of these piñatas, I will have no problem getting, finding plate, good homes for them. But if you have organizations in your community that work with children, that would enjoy having one of these piñatas at their holiday event or something like that, please let me know in the next week, and we will put you down, we will fill it up, we'll deliver it for you, and all of that. So, we're really excited about that. It'll be kind of a little cherry on the top for the end, for the end of the, the end of the week. So, again, we just want to thank you guys for your support. It's been a really wonderful relationship, working with your economic development team, and always looking for ways to promote small businesses, and then also be able to get the word out about the important things that you guys are doing for the local community, because it's very important that they know how hard you're working and supporting all of, all of them, particularly in the outlying areas of the county. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to do this kind of work with your support.
Well, Mary Beth, as we're promoting Buy El Paso Day, I just have to also promote the Better Business Bureau, because it has been, you know, having owned my businesses, I understand their importance, but a couple of years ago, when you began to tell us all the other things, that I'm still surprised that most people don't know, if you have a chance, go, excuse me, go into their site, because, their website, because it'll astonish you how much more they do for local businesses, for the community, information about different things. They were a big part in the pandemic to try to get us to understand some of the things that needed to happen, and very supportive to the businesses, so, also, you know, our best to the Better Business Bureau and everything that they do in our community. And I do hope that you understand the broadness that they bring to our community. So, Mary Beth, and thank you for your leadership in, in all of these areas with small businesses. Thank you.
Very much appreciate those kind words, and I will share them with my team, who work very hard to help consumers on a daily basis, working with businesses and helping the businesses as well. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
If, I don't know if it's possible, is there any way to get a photo with you all somehow?
Yes.
Because we want to promote this on social media, and I wanted to let the community know that you all are directly supporting the program.
Absolutely, well, I was going to hand you this, and we're going to take some pictures.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Item 5D, we do have a correction to read in. Approve and adopt a resolution honoring health care workers and first responders by keeping the holiday lights on all night for the courageous men and women who are sacrificing their lives in El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you, and this is such an important, and we'll talk a little bit of the details on this, but I thank Jacob and Cindy to be here today, but I feel that it's also on behalf of Commissioner Leon, because of his law enforcement and understanding of what first responders have, need to go through or have gone through. So, it's my privilege and honor to place this on the record. So, whereas those who have chosen the health care and first responder occupation as their calling serve their communities with reverence of human life and individual dignity, and whereas physicians, nurses, health aides, EMTs, and others who work in health care are dedicated to relieving pain and suffering, especially during this pandemic, while risking their own lives and the well-being of their families. And whereas El Paso County has lost 2,853 precious lives to the COVID-19 pandemic and recognizes the bravery of health care workers that have cared for the over 150,000 other persons affected by this virus. And whereas El Paso County is dedicating their annual Lights on the Lake kickoff to health care workers and first responders as a Night of Hope at Esquera de Park on December 4th. And whereas El Paso has been one of the safest cities in the nation for the past 20 years due to the men and women of law enforcement and military. And whereas the County of El Paso honors and extends their respect, thanks, and gratitude to the health care workers and first responders of our community for their heroic efforts, and in recognition of their spirit, love, and skill provided to their fellow man during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the County of El Paso will light up the night sky at Esquera de Park to help bring hope to our community. And whereas the County of El Paso encourages all El Passos to join us in honoring health care workers and first responders by keeping their holiday lights on all night on December 4th, in honor of the courageous men and women who are sacrificing their lives to care for us and our loved ones. Now therefore, be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court do hereby declare December 4th to be known as a Night of Hope. Signed this 15th day of November, 2021.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Just want to introduce a topic, sort of going back to how difficult it was. It was, you know, this balance between keeping the businesses open and saving our health care. I just can't, you know, it's hard to even explain what was taking care in the health care, their challenges and everything that they were going through. And a little bit of, you know, not understanding is, we're going to talk a little bit about how important it was. So, you know, our Commissioners' Court, Jacob and Cindy were there last time, it was our first annual, and we said we were going to have this every single year going forward, independent of our challenges. But just, the Commissioners were there to welcome as the cars drove through, and it was just an amazing opportunity for us to show our appreciation, and it was a little bit more restrictive. We're hoping that things don't turn on us again at this point in time, that we would continue this restriction, but at the end of the day, if we can show our appreciation to health care workers and first responders, just, just like we do for military, and you say, "Thank you for your service." If you spot a health care worker or first responder, just make sure you let them know how important it is that you show appreciation. So, I'll start off with Jacob. We have Jacob Sintronis, our CEO of UMC, and if anybody understands the impact of these two individuals that will be speaking today. Jacob?
Thank you. Thank you, Judge Samaniego. Thank you for sponsoring the resolution and for the court for their continued support. This is the second year of the Night of Hope, and I remember that night was very cold and the line was very long, but I was so thankful to see so many health care workers, just appreciative of the thanks that you, Judge, and others were giving our health care workers. And so, we're thankful for this year's recognition of our health care workers once again in El Paso. The health care workers have always been an integral part to our community, and their bravery and commitment is amazing, and they have been consistent, consistent display during our global pandemic. But as a reminder, they're not just there because of the COVID global pandemic, they were there when we had the mass shooting, they've been there when we've had accidents, traumas, when we've had our communities suffering issues like cancer, or heart disease, or strokes. And all our health care workers in El Paso sacrificed so much to be able to provide this service to our community, and I am awed and honored when I see these true heroes in El Paso do the fine work they do, especially in putting our patients, our community first, above the needs sometimes of their families. They provide coverage 24/7, seven, seven days a week, they're here without complaint, looking and caring for those, and making those individuals at their most important time of need their first priority. And so, I am very honored, I'm biased, because I see these heroes work every day, and they come to work with a passion to ensure that the health and safety of each of us is maintained, they look after our families, ourselves, our children, our neighbors, and they're selfless. And so, I am humbled when I see the work they do every day, and I know they're humbled to receive a recognition like this. The Night of Hope offers an opportunity for them to be recognized and encouraged, and it also, encouraging the community to keep their lights on in honor of health care workers ensures that these health care workers' sacrifice is not forgotten. But most of all, especially for the family of UMC, El Paso Children's, and El Paso Health. Our success is also predicated on the support we have continually received from you, Judge, and our Commissioners in supporting us and giving us the necessary support and tools we need to be able to provide this care for our community. So, on behalf of all the health care workers at all the hospitals and physician offices and all the other agencies that are there picking care of our community for so many different reasons, we humbly thank you for this recognition. Thank you.
Jacob, I also want to thank you, you know, we identified Jacob Sintronis, the CEO of UMC, but his role also to stay connected with a private, I've been meeting with some of the private CEO hospitals, and they never fail to tell us how fortunate we are to have Jacob, because he's very connected not only to UMC, but has taken a leadership role with the other CEOs. Some people don't understand, like, how does the children's hospital come into play? But, and just other than children's and taking care of children, they were a huge collateral support for the hospital, and so, I'm very honored to have Cindy Stout, CEO of the children's hospital, and also, if you could comment a little bit on this collateral support that you provide at UMC. Go ahead, Cindy.
Good morning. Happy Monday to everyone. It's my pleasure to be here on behalf of El Paso Children's Hospital. I've now been at the hospital for just over four years, and I have the privilege of really leading a phenomenal team here. And I want to thank the Commissioners' Court again. Like Jacob said, you all have been extremely supportive with everything that we've needed to really have the support and be able to take care of the citizens within our whole county and the community. On behalf of all of the health care heroes in the El Paso community, we want to thank our Commissioners' Court as well. You know, the last one year and eight months has been very challenging, but it has been our privilege to take care of the children and the adults who needed care throughout our whole community. You know, the pandemic really hit the world hard and our county hard, it affected many families, and it continues to do that. However, I think that it is important, as you mentioned, Judge Samaniego, is that we continue to recognize what our health care heroes do on a daily basis. And taking that extra step and recognizing the health care heroes by keeping the holiday lights on at Esquera de Park or throughout the El Paso region really demonstrates the support that our health care heroes so deserve in appreciation for their dedication, their hard work, and their unending passion, quite frankly. You know, I reflect back when the pandemic first started, and I think about the health care workers and how so many of them initially isolated themselves from their family members out of an abundance of caution, because we didn't know exactly what we were dealing with through the COVID-19. The physical, the mental, you know, and even that emotional stress of dealing with a large pandemic can be quite overwhelming, but I'm extremely proud of the resilience of all of our health care heroes throughout the whole community. You know, in so many ways, as you mentioned, what I have a great respect for is that all the hospitals come together when we're challenged throughout the community to take care of all the families together. You know, it's overwhelmingly supportive when you're able to do that with all of the hospitals working in concert together. My background is, I am a registered nurse, however, I've been in the administrative field for many years, and I can't say enough really about our health care heroes and all the work that they've done. You know, it was our pleasure to be able to support the adult population during the pandemic. We were very fortunate that for children, especially in our community, we didn't have a lot of acute care children who got sick and were hospitalized. We did have patients, obviously, that did require hospitalization, but not to the extent in the numbers that the adult populations found. And so, you know, we were very privileged to be able to work together with UMC and to do things such as delineating one of our floors, so that that way, UMC could continue to expand their efforts to take care of the adult population. But that's just one way that so many of the health care heroes have worked together and have really done what they needed to do through this pandemic. So, thank you to Commissioners' Court, we appreciate you all recognizing our health care heroes.
Thank you very much. As you can see, both, before I go to Veronica Myers at Parks and Recreation, but we've convened, this week, we've convened the CEOs, or we're going to meet with all the CEOs from the different hospitals. I got to be with Mr. Tejada from Providence this past Friday and have a discussion on these, but we're going to be meeting, because Cindy, you're absolutely right, this coming together, which really exemplifies our community. It doesn't matter what we do, it's, it's just coming together in collaboration that has helped us so much in, in all our challenges, and I thank you both for, for being part of this process. We're asking every hospital to, to figure out creative ways and work with us and Veronica on how do you want to show appreciation. Sheriff's Department, obviously, and the Police Department will be working with them as well, to see what is it that we could do to, you know, sort of, we did, I thought it was an amazing event last year, but how can we make it even better this year? So, I pass it on now to Veronica. Could you please, Veronica?
Yes. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, Veronica Myers, Parks and Recreation Director. Very thankful, very grateful for all of our first responders and our health care workers. On December 4th, we're inviting the community to please send us their pictures of their first responder, any message they would like to put up on our screen that we will be having up that night. We invite the community to come out at 6:00 to join us for the kickoff of the lights, and on December 4th, it'll be in honor of our first responders' Night of Hope. If you all would like to, please send it to parksinfo@epcounty.com. That's parksinfo@epcounty.com. If they could send their pictures with the message for the screen, we would really appreciate it, and we invite all of the community to come out. It doesn't matter what we do, it's just coming together in collaboration that has helped us so much in all our challenges. And I thank you both for being part of this process. We're asking every hospital to figure out creative ways and work with us and Veronica on how do you want to show appreciation. Sheriff's Department, obviously, and the Police Department will be working with them as well to see what is it that we could do to, you know, sort of, we did, I thought it was an amazing event last year, but how can we make it even better this year? So I pass it on now to Veronica. Could you please, Veronica?
Yes. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, Veronica Myers, Parks and Recreation Director. Very thankful, very grateful for all of our first responders and our healthcare workers. On December 4th, we're inviting the community to please send us their pictures of their first responder, any message they would like to put up on our screen that we will be having up that night. We invite the community to come out at 6:00 to join us for the kickoff of the lights. And on December 4th, it'll be in honor of our first responders' Night of Hope. If you all would like to, please send it to parksinfo@epcounty.com. That's parksinfo@epcounty.com. If they could send their pictures with the message for the screen, we would really appreciate it. And we invite all of the community to come out and support their healthcare workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica. And if you work for one of the hospitals, they're also, we'll be gathering some of their, from their employees, and then we'll be working with them. So once again, what a great opportunity. You know, we have one of the highest turnover rates, a lot of challenges of what happened during the pandemic for both hospitals. Retention is very important, and so we just want to make sure that we honor our healthcare workers and first responders. And I can tell you also, in the first responders, healthcare workers, and teachers are dealing with some of the highest turnover that we've ever had. And a lot of it based on wondering if it was worth it and wondering whether the community truly appreciated, because it was very difficult for them. And so here we are. Let's show appreciation, let's let them know that their careers are unbelievably important to us. And if we could do that, we can help the hospitals retain and also help them recruit more in our community. So thank you very much to our speakers today. We welcome any information or anything we could do as we move forward. Thank you. Yes, so just, I forgot, one of our advocates on the, it's Commissioner Leon, please.
Thank you, Judge. And Dr. Stout, and Jacob, thank you very much. But I've got to say, my daughter's an RN also, and those 12-hour shifts would turn into 16-hour shifts, 20-hour shifts. And they deal with COVID patients and other illnesses and diseases where she'd get home and have to change in the garage before even coming into the house. And you're right, Judge, it's, they face so many challenges where they're being burnt out. We took some lunch and some goodie bags to Providence East, to the nurses there and healthcare workers, along with the Sheriff's Department. And they were very thankful for the goodie bag, the T-shirt and the food and all that was contained in there. But they were most thankful for being, for somebody to say, thank you. So this is a great resolution, and we appreciate it. And El Paso really fared well, even though we were at our darkest some months back, where we could see it was just getting worse, but it got better. So thanks to our healthcare workers. Again, thank you all for being here today.
Thank you. Jacob, Cindy, yours a picture. Okay, so we're going to take a picture with our resolution as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Just one more, just Commissioner Robinson, please.
Thank you, Judge. Cindy, Jacob, and all of your workers, I want to thank you for everything that you do. Having personally a knowledge of what the first responders provide to our community, I'm very personally appreciative of everything that you do on a daily basis. You guys respond when no one else is available. You provide a service that no one else can provide. You know, so tell all the workers at both your children's hospital, at UMC, and all the hospitals throughout the community, thank you every day for everything you do. So as we say about, when you see a veteran, say thank you. When you see first responders, please tell them, say, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Robinson. Jessica?
Thank you.
Have a good, good day, both of you.
Item number six is public comment. We do not have any speakers signed up for regular public comment. We'll take no action. Is there a specific order you'd like to take, Judge?
Yes, I just want to comment that, just so that we know how we're going to move forward, I will be needing to leave at 1:30. And so I'd like Commissioner Leon to preside over the Commissioners Court at that time. And also, I'd like to see if we could go have a 20-minute break. It's our opportunity for us to be together. We need to take a picture for the holidays, and so we'll take a break around maybe 11:30 for 20 minutes. And then we'd like to go all the way through to 1:30 for our lunch. And hopefully, I can pick up as much as I can before I need to leave on a commitment. So thank you, Jessica. Any other thing? Betsy, are there any orders or anything you'd like to, anybody waiting or anybody? And I do apologize, because of the executive, you know, session that we have, that might be a little lengthy, and there's items very important to me, I'd like to take the executive session right after we have HR, we'll be present, took one of the items out of consent. So I'd like to go there and then go right into the executive session. Would that work for you, Betsy?
Yes, sir. And then when we return from executive, if we could please do item 7A, we have our financial advisor on hold for that item whenever the court is ready.
Is that, okay, Jessica, you got that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Judge, may I ask a question?
Yes, Commissioner Olgin?
We do have several members who traveled from Fabens to speak on item number 10. When will we be taking up that item?
We can do that right after, we would do executive, and then we, the item proposed by Betsy, and then we'll take that item, if you don't mind.
So that would be after the break, or before the break?
Before the break.
Before the break. Okay, great. Thank you.
And they're here on the court, right?
Judge, if you don't mind, one of them is real short. 7B is real short. Could we, the board appointment?
Item?
Item A.
Item A, Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry, 8. I said B. Item A, if we can do that, it's real short.
So let's be fair to our audience, you've got, they're here right now.
Yes.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's do them before we go into executive, because that executive might be too long for them to be waiting. Apologize, so we'll.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll do that in that order.
Okay, would you like to take the HR item first?
Yes, HR item.
Okay, item 4K from consent. Approve and authorize the revision to the El Paso County's promotions policy. Opinion number 21-1384.
Michelle, go ahead.
Good morning, Judge. Sorry, Judge. Good morning, Judges and Commissioners. Michelle Cochrane with the Human Resources Department. The purpose of today's agenda item is to seek Commissioners Court approval for the revision to the county's promotion policy. This policy was last revised on August 30th, 2021, to allow for non-attorney employees to be placed at a higher step than entry, but no higher than step two in the new position, and to also allow for requests to be received prior to the effective date, but no longer than 90 days after that effective date. The purpose of the latest revision is to add a new section to the policy to address compensation for temporary promotions or assignments. Temporary promotions or assignments are when employees are temporarily promoted or assigned to an existing or newly approved position in a salary grade higher than their regular position for a minimum of 30 calendar days. This is normally for the temporary filling of vacant positions or long-term leave of an incumbent. The new section details the eligibility requirements, process, and compensation for these situations. Employees who meet the eligibility requirements outlined in the policy, if approved by the court, would only be entitled to the extra compensation beginning today, November 15th, moving forward. This policy does not apply to assigned tasks that qualify as other duties as assigned or when assigned duties of a lower-graded position. The fiscal impacts for this will vary depending on the requests, but would typically come from salary savings, grant funding, or other available funding as identified by the Budget and Fiscal Policy Department. This policy has been reviewed by the county attorney's office. I have Yvette Ugas on today, should you have any questions for them. But before court approval, we would like to amend Section 2C to read, "This policy does not apply to assigned tasks that qualify as, quote, 'other duties as assigned,' end quote, or when assigned duties of a lower-graded position." Approval of this item will allow our HR staff to update the policy on the county's webpage for implementation. If you have any questions on the policy, we'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Yvette, any further comments from?
Comments? No, Judge, I was just on to see if you all had any questions in regards to the language of the policy, but unless you have questions, I have nothing for you all today.
Okay, thank you. And Betsy, any comments from your vantage point?
Just wanted to mention, this is a really important policy that the county has needed for a long time to adequately and fairly compensate our employees who are actually assigned to a higher position on a temporary basis for a period longer than 30 days. This will help us with implementing the ARP program that the court recently approved, where we will have some temporary positions. But rather than hire someone external for some of those, we may promote internally for a temporary period, we'll compensate them accordingly, and then they'll return to their vacant position once the funding is no longer available.
And I think we were all witness, Betsy, to people stepping up and not getting compensated and having to do a position that was, you know, somebody else would have and make more money during that position. So I think we've all witnessed how important that is and difficult to see that someone's taking over something and not being compensated for it. So any questions, any comments from our commissioners? I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Yvette. Michelle, thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Judge, could we go ahead and take item 8? It should be rather quick.
Yes.
Okay, item number 8, board appointments. Approve and authorize the appointment of Commissioner Carl Robinson's nominee, David Daxton, to the El Paso County Veterans Advisory Commission for term beginning December 1st, 2021, and ending on November 30th, 2023.
Commissioner?
Judge, my pleasure to present you and David Daxton. Who, David, would you step up? David is a longtime veteran of the El Paso community, involved in numerous activities in El Paso to include, did a wonderful job in regards to the Veterans Day Parade in Northeast this past Saturday, past Thursday, I'm sorry, on, and he has abundance of knowledge and experience in dealing with veterans' issues. So, Mr. Daxton, it is my pleasure to present you and appoint him to serve out the department as my appointee to the El Paso County Veterans Commission.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. My pleasure to serve. I just recently completed serving on the redistricting board, and there was a vacancy on this particular position or board, and Veterans Affairs are one of my passions and such. So I agreed to accept the appointment from Commissioner Robinson. I'm familiar with the, with the board, what they do, and I'm good, close friends with the, my previous two predecessors, so I can, you know, lean on them and continue on the job that they're doing. So, thank you.
David, I got to see you in action all of last week.
Yeah, we really appreciate that. It's been a busy week with Veterans Affairs and, 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 leading up to Veterans Day, I'm involved in a couple of different veterans' organizations, went out and visited school kids at grade schools, talking to them all week long, and did quite a few different events. I know that you guys helped us financially on the funding of the parades that we had. I participated in two of those and such, and it culminated with the ceremonies at the flagpole, and I appreciated all the Commissioners that were there. You honored us with your presence.
No, we thank you. You go beyond. We do a lot for the veterans, but you've done so many other things. So you're going to be an excellent member for our advisory board. You want to go ahead and make the motion?
Yeah, one last thing, I would just say that David is one of those individuals that he's a taskmaster, and if you give him something to do, consider it done. So I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Best, David. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to it.
David Carr's got work for you to do already.
Okay, now, item number 10 from Commissioners Court. Approve and authorize El Paso County to commit match funding to the El Paso County Water Control and Improvement District Number 4 in the amount of $222,801.34 for the Fabens Veterans Memorial Project grant application to the Economic Development Administration, FY 2021, American Rescue Plan Act, travel, tourism, and outdoor recreation notice of funding opportunity. Funding is available in general fund, G admin transfer out grant to match. And we do have several speakers to speak on behalf of this item.
Judge, if I may just give a little bit of background?
Absolutely.
To the court. Thank you. So I'm very proud to bring forth this item for the court's consideration. Just to give everyone a little bit of background regarding Fabens Veterans Park, technically, Fabens Veterans Park is not a county-owned park. It's actually owned by the Fabens Water District. However, the county did enter into an interlocal agreement many, many years ago in recognition of its importance to the Fabens community, and not only that, but the surrounding communities as well. So the interlocal is between the county, which helped obtain some of the amenities that are there at the park, as well as the Water District, who owns the property and provides the water for the grass, and Fabens ISD, who helps to maintain the park. The park is a very important part of the Fabens community, which has a high proportional number of veterans, also in the surrounding areas of Socorro, San Eli, Torneo. When this grant opportunity came about through the American Rescue Plan Act, we notified the Fabens Veterans Park Committee, which is very, very active. We have several of their members here today to speak on behalf of this item. But we've all recognized for many, many years that really we do need to improve this park and make it as beautiful and memorial to our veterans as we possibly can. So when this grant opportunity came up, we notified the Park Committee, the Veterans Park Committee, and they have been doing an excellent job and working incredibly difficult to submit this application. So this grant application would actually, the applicant is the owner of the land, which is the Fabens Water District. The county would, it is, would, what we are asking is that the county provide support to the grant application. There is a match requirement, and so the three entities that have this interlocal agreement, the School District, the Water District, and the county, would each be proportionally responsible for their portion of the match. The county's match is the amount that Jessica read into the record, the $222,801. This grant opportunity, so everyone is aware, the county submitted its own application for funding for the mission trail, but that's a completely different application. It is the same pot of money, as we all know, grant applications are competitive. But we did clear it with the EDA that the county could submit its own application the way we did for the mission trail, but at the same time, we could also support this particular grant application, which is technically being submitted by the Fabens Water District. As I mentioned, we have several speakers, and I'm incredibly grateful for them making the trip from Fabens. I make that trip quite often. I know it is quite a drive, so thank you all. But I'm very happy to say that we have Mr. Sobloski and Mr. Ramirez from the Veterans Park Committee. We also have several of our members of our Veterans Advisory Board. We have Aldina Hager, who is my appointee to the advisory board, as well as Alexis McCray is here. I also see our Veteran of the Year, David Garcia, is here, and of course, Carl Dwyer is here as well. So I'd like to go ahead and turn the microphone over to Mr. Sobloski and anyone else who would like to make any remarks in support of this item.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning to you all. So Judge Samaniego, Commissioners, thank you for your service. We know that the work that you do is obviously a challenging work, enjoyable, I know, for many of you have been here for quite a while, and so I thank you for that service. But I'm going to give a little bit of a background of the Fabens Veterans Park and the committee. The Fabens Veteran Park was created in 2003 via a collaboration between the El Paso County Water Control and Improvement District Number 4, which is the local water company, the El Paso County, and Fabens ISD via an interlocal agreement that continues today. We fast forward to 2014, and the Fabens Veterans Park Committee was created to ensure that there was a focus on the park and that it continued to be a veterans', veterans' park. Since 2014- Veterans, Veterans Park. Since 2014, the committee has been instrumental in acquiring volunteers for picnic table painting, for refurbishing. We go in there and cut weeds. So, well, there's lots of, there's a cadre of volunteers that take pride in the work that we do there, and we've been doing that since 2014. Moreover, in 2019, the committee obtained a set of Hawk missiles, which were refurbished by a local citizen to museum quality, and they were installed in November of 2020. When everyone else was, was holding back because of the pandemic, in those six-plus acres, we were able to do this work and, and set the missiles in place. By the way, we got 10,000 hits on our Fabens Veterans Park page on those Hawk missiles from across the country, from New Jersey to California, from the state of Washington to Florida. There was, there were 10,000 hits. In 2017, thanks to you all, El Paso County granted $164,000 for new lighting, for playground equipment, for concrete work, and picnic tables. And so, we're very appreciative of, of, of that grant that you all so graciously awarded to, to the Fabens Veterans Park. Since 2000, since 2016, we have had an annual Veterans Celebration there at, on the grounds. We've had people from Las Cruces to Van Horn attend our celebrations. We just had our celebration November the 10th. We had veterans from Torneo, from San Elisario, from Socorro, from Horizon City. We had veterans from El Paso. We had veterans from Las Cruces, New Mexico, and we certainly had veterans from Fabens. And so, we come before you describing the project that goes, that we're applying for, which is an outdoor museum with exhibition space featuring military equipment installations, which are donated by outside groups, and a Veterans Memorial that would be right at the center. This Veterans Memorial would be anchored by a minimum 70-foot flagpole and a 70-by-50-foot US flag, which would attract veterans from around the region and indeed the country. As I mentioned, we've had 10,000 Facebook page heads. It would be similar to other outdoor museums, like the First Cavalry Outdoor Museum, which is in Fort Hood, Texas. Of course, the Veterans Memorial would double as a focal point for the community and provide an open space to host major regional events and festivals, such as a Pecan Festival to enhance business opportunities for the area. We have mentioned that we had those five annual Veterans Celebrations. We want it to be regional. We don't, it isn't just for Fabens. It's taking place in Fabens, but it's for all veterans to come and, and be recognized. Of course, we know that Fort Bliss is a big area where, where there's a tremendous number of veterans, and so we continue to invite veterans from Fort Bliss to attend. And so, let me just say a few words about the economic impact that will result from vendors which would set up shop nearby to sell to tourists and to any other people who would come to visit the Veterans Park Memorial. We envision that food and craft vendors would be setting up around the park to service tourists and, again, community visiting the memorial and outdoor museum. We have already had a merchant stroll affair that took place there just prior to early November, which provided opportunities for businesses to set up their wares and crafts, et cetera. So, the outdoor museum displays and exhibits will serve as an educational opportunity to the surrounding school districts to visit and study our nation's history and to learn to value our veterans. We always bring the schools into the celebration. Fabens has been a major part of it for, for the previous four years and this fifth year, but Torneo also brought a drum line this, this year to, to the celebration. Next year, we, we plan to bring San Elisario. We already have veterans coming. We plan to bring students from San Elisario to also bring joy to our veterans. So, the Fabens Veterans Park Committee strongly supports the grant application and grant match funding that is set before you today, and we, we ask you to, to join and, of course, approve the grant match and the full support of this project. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sobloski.
We'll go ahead and listen to the rest of our speakers.
Yes. Welcome, Mr. Ramirez.
Good morning.
I'm Rafael Ramirez, and I am a 22-year veteran of the US Air Force, and I am here to ask you also to please support us with the park. I am very grateful to all of you for all that you've done for the county. I really appreciate that. For the park, we are very close to the high school, and every time that I've been over at the park, some of the kids come through there and gives us the opportunity to talk with them. And once the park is fully developed, I can imagine those kids going in there and, and as we see the names of those veterans that have given up their life for us, for our country, and we start talking with them. And, oh yeah, that was my grandpa. Oh yeah, this was so-and-so relatives, and gives us a chance to talk with the students and have them, or have them learn how we appreciate what our veterans have done for us. The other thing is the, the park provides a walking area, and in my age, I definitely need a walking area. Once the park is fully developed, we'll be able to, to go out there and walk around the park and mix, mingle with the, with the rest of the people in our town. We are a fairly small town, and as I have, I just mentioned that the walking area, many of our fellow members have made comments on that, that we need places where we can walk. The other thing is the, the beauty of the park, as you can see, as you saw in the pictures, once the park is fully developed, fully developed, that will be a beautiful, beautiful park. And I know, because I do that whenever we travel elsewhere. If I read about a certain place that to me is beautiful, we normally, my wife and I normally stop there and we take a look at it. If people coming through here stop by to look at our park, that's going to help us locally in the businesses, because we will normally go and have lunch there or, you know, stay in, in the town and in the, in the park area for a while. So, all that will help us, and we do appreciate it if you would support us on that, help us to fully develop that park. And the other thing that we can do, as Mr. Sobloski was saying, we can hold a community organized events. We can have, for example, we can have food festivals, musical events, we can recreational area for our youth to meet there. There are so many things that we can do with that park, and again, I ask you, as my representatives, to please help us with this park. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for your time and words. Thank you. Go ahead.
Aldina?
Good morning, county judge and county commissioners. It is my pleasure to be here and support one of the great things that El Paso County can do for us as veterans, as a vice chair for our Veterans Advisory Board for El Paso County and representing Commissioner Holgi as her appointee. Not only that, but I do live in District Three, so District Three is very near and dear to my heart. I'm not a lifelong El Paso, and however, this is my heart and soul. My son was born here. He was born in William Beaumont, so he is an Army brat. And I think that Fabens Memorial Park would leave a legacy for children like my son, for children like Mr. Ramirez's and Mr. Sobloski's children, family members. As I was invited here today to speak, I'm sorry, I've been losing my voice, but it's, it's hard to put it in words how much pride it gives to a veteran when they are recognized, even on the smallest level. However, a park like this, and as I was doing my research to find out where the closest memorial park is going east of I-10, the closest one is in Van Horn. It's a very, very small memorial park, so like Mr. Ramirez said, this would be something that would bring in veterans from Sierra Blanca, from Van Horn, from Fort Hancock. We have a lot of veterans living in Fort Hancock as well. Even though it may be within the El Paso County, I think it represents veterans from all over Texas, all over nation, all over our nation, and even though names may be from our local family members who have lost their children, brothers, sisters, husbands, wives, it represents our nation. And I think that El Paso County does have a very, very high possibility to become a nation capital for veterans. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Aldina. Alexis?
Alexa, thank you.
Good morning, Judge and commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. I have been very hands-on with the Fabens Veterans Committee since I have been appointed as the Chairwoman in March of this year. I have attended several of their meetings and was fortunate to actually be a participant of the Veterans Day Ceremony that took place last week there as well. And I will say that Fabens High School truly is proud of their veterans. They're proud of their community. The students are very excited to recognize veterans and to learn more about, you know, what it means to even serve for our country. Mr. Sobloski and the team have been instrumental in trying to come up with different designs and how we can incorporate ways to make sure that we encompass every service branch and that even our women veterans are, are recognized at our park. So, like everyone has already echoed, you know, the tourist attraction, the opportunity for us to have veteran events, and another location for us to continue to heal. Ascarte is a little far for, you know, some of the veterans that are outside of the city limits, but this park could serve as another opportunity for veterans to come together, to heal, and to get to know one another as well. I think it would be great to continue to incorporate the high school. I think it's in a great location to continue to incorporating our youth, like everyone has said, and expand our veteran outreach and expand the, the visibility of our veterans and our service here in our community. And I think this would be a great addition to getting us well on our way to being the veteran capital.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis.
Alexa, thank you for mentioning the high school. We have something similar. Bel Air has their memorial, and just having the students involved, which probably would not have an opportunity to understand about veterans, and that memorial has been an impetus for, for students to be aware of that. So, the idea of having it close to Fabens High School is, is so, you know, very important. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
It's nice to see you again, sir.
Hey, nice to see you.
I feel like I've known you for a year now with all the contact.
You kind of petered out on me on the northeast parade. You didn't want to walk with me, that's for what. We missed you at our outreach, but we had a successful outreach, and we're gonna continue doing that. So, but anyway, that's another topic. Good morning, Judge Samaniego and commissioners. Last week, we were very busy, everyone, celebrating our veterans in our community on Veterans Day, and most of all, selecting me as your veteran, as El Paso County Veteran of the Year, which you will never forget, because my picture's on that wall. But I was listening to Judge Samaniego's remarks. He stated pride of the veteran community. The wall of honor symbolizes unity to continue to work together and remain veteran-ready. I focused on four powerful words of your statement that symbolizes dedication and commitment, pride, unity, working together, and remain veteran-ready. And because of the dedication and commitment a veteran service offers in our veteran community, El Paso is ranked the top 10 best place for veterans to live. I'm here today to strongly voice my support for the Veterans Memorial Outdoor Exhibition Museum at Fabens Veterans Park. Beautiful park. I had the opportunity there to speak, and there's one thing that I told the veterans there in Fabens, that they will not be forgotten or neglected. To memorialize our veterans in our community and honor their service and legacy. And for El Paso to rank number one for the veterans to live, we must act now. And I ask for your support, a vote, to support the match grant funding for this beautiful park and project that will show the United States that we are veteran-friendly. God bless everyone, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
David, we, we thank you. And in just a very few days, he's exemplifying why he is the veteran.
Definitely.
I'll have the honor of presenting him at the UTEP game halftime this Saturday, so please be there, because it'll be a, a bigger audience to, to let people know the importance of our veterans in our community.
Good morning, Carl.
Hey, good morning, Judge, commissioners. For the record, Carl Dwyer from the El Paso County Veterans Service Office, where every day is Veterans Day. I'm gonna be real brief, I don't want to repeat. Everybody's already iterated everything that my letter of support from my office contains to support this project. Been working with Mr. Sobloski and the committee for quite some time, every, every week to, to get after this. The only thing I wanted to add, the component that I haven't really heard is the mental health component, and what a park like this or memorial like this can do for the mental health of not only the veterans, but the community as a whole. Last week, we celebrated Veterans Day. We had a lot of great events, lot of great events, and the resounding thing that I was always asked, or veterans, we always ask each other, when people say, "Thank you for your service", how is that received? You know, those words, "Thank you for your service." And the way this court or our county could show and put into words, action, and a park such as this, it would show three things. It would show the respect that our county has for veterans. It would give them the opportunity to reflect on history and what their service actually means for our country, and it would show that we have not forgotten, and we remember that their service and their dedication to duty and what it means. So, on behalf of the El Paso County Veterans Office, I humbly request your support of this grant application. I understand the budgetary impact and the fiscal impact that it may have, but, and the timing may not be perfect, but strongly support it, and we ask for your strong and heartfelt consideration. Thank you, Judge, and thank you, commissioners.
Well, thank you for how you represent the county. I mean, we've been very honored since you got on board, so thank you for that. Thank you.
Judge, one thing that I forgot to mention was that even though Fabens Veterans Park is not a county park, it is still included as part of our county master plan in recognition of its importance to the Fabens community. I'm not sure if there are any questions.
Any, any others?
We also have Annette Gutierrez online who signed up for public comment.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Yes, thank you. I just want to just briefly talk to you all from the administrative point of view. If the Water District were to be funded by EDA for this initiative, there will be work involved in terms of administering the grant, and it is a large sum of funding that they are requesting. However, Rio Grande Council Governments is a planning district under the Economic Development Administration, and so- Administration, and so we, that is part of our purview within the planning district mission for us to assist our communities with technical assistance. So, I just wanted to let everybody know that if they are to be funded, the council governments will be able to assist them in ensuring that the funding is being used appropriately, that paperwork is being submitted timely, and that they're in good standing with the funding agency.
Thank you.
And that concludes my comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Robinson, go ahead.
I learned about public speaking. Be on time, be brief, and be seated. We have an opportunity, well, let me back up. As Carl indicated, he said, we all hear the words, "We support veterans." We support, those are nice words, but actions speak louder than words. Since I've been on the Commission's Court, we have, along with the judge, we have initiated some efforts to support veterans by my time, my talent, and my tangibles. So, in short, let's not utter words, let's show action. So, we have initiatives already towards the Commission's Court, more than my record memory, they have done in the past, past years towards the Commission's Court. So, we got, once we get something started, Judge, let's maintain the momentum. So, I move to approve the action, to support the action for the Fabin's Veterans Park.
Second.
Yeah, just before, I just want to make sure, a couple of comments that we had been very successful with community involvement, and this really exemplifies this, everybody coming together. We've seen it there at Fabin's, and when it starts from the community, it just works because sometimes we leave, right? Because we've got other things to do, the community's not behind it. It's extremely difficult. I love the roots there at Fabin's are unbelievable. I've had an opportunity to work there at the Housing Authority as an interim director, and I was so impressed with the number of people that have lived there for so many years and, you know, generation after generation. We want to create an environment where people stay in their community. I think that, along with the idea of having our aerospace, you know, sort of launching there and taking off, it's really important. And then finally, you know, it's like, I guess we're on our third year of, I've been proposing, worked with this destination, El Paso, didn't get a lot of traction on this idea of veterans capital of the U.S., but it's beginning to now, you know, blossom is that we, it's something that you don't get, that somebody doesn't crown you and say you're the veterans capital of the U.S., but then you have to defend it. And we're going to defend it with our survey. We're working really hard at looking at that survey that we don't want to say that we're not. And I always use Hatch, you know, the chili capital of the world is Hatch, right? And there's no such title, right? But you can't, it's defendable, right? I mean, you know it's the greatest chili, you know it's something that everybody uses, it's all over. And so, this is another more material, because I can tell you, veterans are so loyal that while they're coming down, you know, I-10, they're going to stop. They're going to stop and see why we're known as veterans capital of the U.S. And they're going to, we need to show them what we see on, you know, flags across America. We've got the museum in San Elisario. This would be a tremendous addition to that. And so, we, I think the veterans deserve to be recognized as a great place to be, veteran-ready community. But these are, this is material that will really help us because economically, if we are able to get to that level of people knowing that they've got a lot of businessmen now that we're going to be getting together because we need private support, it's not going to be the county determining the expenses of being the veterans capital of the U.S. It's going to require a lot of veterans donations and business donations. And so, this is an amazing opportunity, one more step towards that end. So, Commissioner Hulgin, thank you for bringing this up. Go ahead, Jessica.
Commissioner Hulgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Simoniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. And Judge, I want to thank Erica Ortega in our Grants Department. She was a tremendous, tremendous help to the committee as they were putting together the application, as well as Norma Rivera Palacios. Public Works also helped with all of the incredible amount of work that goes into putting together a grant application of this nature.
We live and die by grants here.
Yes.
So, thank you.
As a closing note, David Garcia?
Yes, sir.
I heard you, the other day we were talking about Fabin's, and I recall that you said you were going to donate the first thousand dollars.
Would you guys congregate, Fabin's? Apologize, I thought I'd meet all of them.
One, two, three. Judge, if I may, we also have two presenters for Item 11, which is also a park-related item, and I believe should be pretty quick. We have Justin Chapman and Joel Guzman from Hunt Properties. I'm not sure if we could take up that item before we break?
Item number 11? Okay, yes, item number 11. Discuss and take appropriate action to authorize staff to work with Hunt Communities to develop and bring forward an agreement for accepting a donation of land for a park in Mission Ridge, including a private-public partnership to develop a world-class park that would serve the greater east El Paso County area.
Thank you, Jessica. So, Judge, this is an item to gauge the court's support as to whether this is something that we want to move forward with. As we all know, the East Lake, Mission Ridge area is one of the fastest, if not the fastest, growing areas in the county, and much of that land is being developed by Hunt Companies, who has approached the county about wanting to donate, I believe it's a total of 10 acres, yes, a 10-acre parcel of land for the development of a park. And we have with us this morning Justin Chapman and Joel Guzman, who are going to be making a presentation. And so, basically, what we are asking today is whether or not the court is interested in pursuing this acceptance of the land donation for the creation of a future park. And just as an aside, this is also something that was addressed in our Parks Master Plan. I'm not sure, I don't think it was attached to the backup, but if y'all remember, we had a section in the master plan about long-term planning for additional community and/or regional parks. So, this, I believe, would certainly qualify as a regional park, and it is within the area that, one of the areas that was identified in the Parks Master Plan as potentially needing a community or a regional park in the future, especially in light of the population growth that's expected to continue in that area.
Thank you. Justin, go ahead.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. Certainly a pleasure to spend some time with you today. Commissioner Hulgin, thank you for putting this item on the agenda. We really appreciate your conversations that you've had with us, and I'd like to take a moment also to thank Betsy, who has been terrific. We've met with people on her staff, including Jose Landeros and Norma and Veronica, as we've chewed on this idea and thought about how we might bring it forward. Before I dive into the PowerPoint presentation that we've created, I'd like to introduce you to Joel Guzman. Some of you may know him. Joel is from El Paso. He's dedicated, after spending some time away from El Paso, both his career and family development here in El Paso. And if this project moves forward, and again, it's an exploratory question we're asking right now, we're asking what is possible. We've got some parameters that we'd like to consider for a potential partnership, but we really want to come back to this court with some fleshed-out ideas, some budgets, some cost estimates, some concepts. What can this thing be and get feedback from the court and a presentation from the county staff? As we do that, Joel will be a critical part of that effort. He can dedicate a lot of his time and resources to that effort. He's a vice president at Hunt Communities, and he's in charge of special projects. If there's any concern about county resources and staff being dedicated to this, to managing this effort, he can certainly play the yeoman's effort and carry that weight, keeping the county absolutely involved in form. They can participate at whatever level they like, but I want you to know that Joel will be there as somebody who can advance this shoulder-to-shoulder with the county. So, I'll let him say a word or two if he'd like.
Just before we start, just could you comment a little bit because your organization does amazing things. So, just to put it in perspective for Hunt Communities, for public, if you would just...
Sure. Thank you, Judge. So, we work for the Hunt Companies. My name is Justin Chapman, and most specifically, the projects that I oversee, the business unit within the Hunt Companies is Hunt Communities. And Hunt Communities is a land developer in El Paso. We've been doing this here in El Paso for nearly 20 years. We are the developer of the Mission Ridge Master Plan Community in east El Paso, which Commissioner Hulgin appropriately pointed out is the fastest-growing of area of El Paso County. And really, I am continually surprised by the encouragement I get from the people that I report to and their commitment to quality, to investment, to raising outcomes, to improving broadly the county of El Paso, to create opportunities for people who live here, to encourage new people to come here. And every time I think I raise the bar, I'm pushed to raise the bar. And I say that, I mean, it is, it's just the reality. Every time I think I'm there, it's, all right, let's push it a little bit farther. So, what I want to share with you guys is that we really want, as our investment in east El Paso County, and as we encourage the county to come forward and participate with us in this really remarkable opportunity, it's one that we really try to put our money where our mouth is and really commit to transformative projects in El Paso County that will have long-term benefit to the people who live here. So, I'll let Joel say a word or two, and then...
Thank you so much. That's what I wanted, that awareness and the importance of private-public partnerships that happens a lot greater in some other communities, and we need it, and this is, I think, one of those examples. And thank you for elaborating on your organization. Go ahead.
Thank you, County Judge and Commissioners. Good morning, actually. And I'm going to go ahead and take a cue from Commissioner Robinson to be brief and be seated. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Justin. Thank you all. But I would be the face, hopefully, working with your staff if this gets approved, moving this ball forward.
And thank you for recognizing our Public Works and our other, you know, everyone that works for the county, because we really appreciate them, but when it comes from the outside in, it's really much appreciated that you recognize them. So, thank you.
Well, good. Thank you.
Thanks, Joel. I don't know that I have control over the PowerPoint, but I trust somebody does. So, the idea that we have is through partnership to create a preeminent park that stands out not only in El Paso, but which stands out regionally as a place that attracts people from the county, that broadly serves big cross-sections of the county, that fits within the county's master plan, that complements without overlapping some of the things that the county already does and promotes. And we're at the early stages. I mean, and I say early, although the Hunt Companies has been thinking about this idea for some years, and we've tried to advance it at different levels and stages, and we've never quite gotten the traction that we need. We finally have engaged more with the county, and in conjunction with the preparation of the Parks Master Plan, we think that the timing is right to explore an opportunity where we can deliver something that I've described. If you can go to the next slide, please. And so, what we're proposing is a first-class regional park. It's something that we think not only would serve the immediate neighborhood of Mission Ridge and the surrounding colonias, but would also serve the broader El Paso County, and frankly, would attract people from other areas. There are parks built in San Antonio which become great economic drivers. Our proposal would be to dedicate a 10-acre park in Mission Ridge. It's surrounded on the south by East Lake Boulevard, on the north by Paso del Este Boulevard, and on the east by Peyton Road. This parcel is probably two miles from the new Amazon facility. It's also a couple miles from the Big River Oaks Commercial Development, which is being built at East Lake and I-10. We think it's critical that this park reflect the values of El Paso, that it is shaped by feedback from the citizens of El Paso. And so, we think part of the process moving forward is to engage in community charrettes, to ask people what they want to see, to engage with the elected officials and county staff to find out precisely what will be most beneficial to the region, what the best bang for your buck is, if I can say it that way. We think the design needs to integrate El Paso's family culture. It needs to be representative of our geography. There's an opportunity, because there's some land adjacent to this park space, where if the county has a need for a county facility, and because they know a lot of people might be coming to this location, you know, if there's an opportunity to incorporate a county facility adjacent to or with this park, I think that's a part of the conversation we'd like to have. Maybe the next slide, please. And so, Judge, to your point, we'd like to propose a public-private partnership. Hunt is willing to donate the land. We're willing to pay for third-party charrettes, creation of planning documents, drawings which would represent what might be possible, pay for landscape and park design and the construction documents, any legal fees that are necessary as we negotiate a partnership agreement in order to move forward. And then, we think it's also a real key component of this, and I'd like you guys to consider it as we move forward, is that a park like this, not only can it unite a community, not only can it bring people to a park that are multi-generational, not only can it be an investment which lasts into the future for many generations, but it's also something that can drive economic growth, and it's something that can protect existing tax bases. I mean, it starts building real strong communities and elevating the quality of the neighborhoods that surround it. And so, we'd be happy to pay for third-party economic analysis to really come back with some tangible evidence which supports that this is an investment that would be worth making by the county. The question we have for the county, and it's worth considering, as you ask us to move forward, working with the staff, to come back with a more developed proposal, is, are you willing to support a project like the one that I'm describing, first-class project that has a regional impact? Is there a financing opportunity that the county is willing to consider? Are they willing to get behind the construction idea? Again, I'm not asking you today to make a decision about paying for a park. That's not the question we're asking. You need way more information. But part of the proposal, what we are asking for is ultimately a county commitment to move forward with the project that we bring back. And then, lastly, we think for a park like this, there's a real question about maintenance. How does, how do you maintain a park like this into the future? The County Parks Department has a terrific staff. They're able to manage a number of things, but does something like this become overwhelming? Is a third-party maintenance agreement a better way to do this in the long term? And if fees can be generated at this park, maybe that's a great way to potentially cover that expense. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. We've talked a little bit about this, but I believe that this is a project that should have positive economic development impacts. John Borella, the CEO of the Borderplex Alliance, said that there will be a commercial investment trail effect from Amazon's east-side development. First-class community amenities in the area will increase our region's competitiveness. And so what he's saying is, we saw the investment in Amazon, we see the investment from River Oaks, we see the investment from Hunt and other developers in East El Paso, we see the growth of the county. We believe that this is another critical component to really shaping and creating the very best economic opportunity for El Paso County. We note that tax values have grown substantially in Mission Ridge in the past years. The county has been great, man, they have been so involved in building roadways, improving mobility. And as we've improved mobility, investment by Amazon, investment in commercial opportunities, investment in housing and quality, we think this is a terrific follow-up opportunity. Next slide, please. And so I guess I'll leave you with, you know, what exactly are we hoping to do? We would like you to authorize the staff and Betsy to work with us to flesh out these ideas, to come forward with a concept. And I don't know whether, you know, you're going to say, yeah, just come back with one concept, and, you know, we choose between only that, right? That's the only option we have. You know, I think this is an evolving conversation. I think this is one that will involve periodic updates to the Commissioners' Court. But ultimately, where we're trying to go is to come back with a particular type of park or amenity design. This is going to involve community meetings, finding out what people want. This is going to involve us securing financial projections, what does it cost to build this park, and what does it cost to maintain this park? We're going to have to come back with a discussion of the timeframe, how do we get from A to Z? And then lastly, we're going to come back with a more formal proposal which would describe what it is that we think, again, after having engagement from the community and from the county staff, this is what we'd like to present and see if the court's willing to move forward with that idea.
Justin, some of the things that you touched on that aligns us is a couple of things. One, obviously, is the private-public partnerships that are so desperately needed. The community involvement and letting them determine what's best, I mean, I think that's very much aligned with that. And I think the third one that, to me, is very important, is that I've always said that, you know, downtown is amazing, but we sort of can't wait until somehow the quality of life goes all the way to the east, you know, to the farther east. And so this idea that we've had that no one should live in our community different just because they happen to be living somewhere else, is something that I've really, you know, been pushing for, and I know the Commissioners have always been very supportive. So I think it lends that. But finally, when I, I'm typically called when companies are deciding, like Amazon, and I get to go to all the meetings prior to that, before they make a decision of coming to El Paso. And, you know, and I did the same on the other side, of going to communities while working with a large organization, wanting to be in a community. And the theme of quality of life, infrastructure, is what really makes that determination, you know, that we're able to... There was a time when we just could not tell people that it's the quality of life, they're going to bring their families over, and whether or not we're able to sustain that. That was the hardest conversation 15 years ago that I've ever had, because it was like, well, do you have this, do you have that? And we didn't sometimes, and it's sort of, we lost the deal. This will add tremendously to that idea, the east side wanting to move in manufacturing, Fabens, a lot of pressure of infrastructure. They keep telling us, we don't see offices, we want hotels, we want... And sometimes it's hard for us to come up with that. So I think this is one of those that adds to the attractiveness of companies wanting to come and be here, seen as more of a cosmopolitan kind of city. And this is something that would really add to that. And obviously, you know, just having a better quality of life in the rural areas is very dear to all of us as we do that. So, you know, those are my thoughts of things that, you know, people come up with. I'm working with an organization, 140 want to move their corporate offices here, and that's all the questions I get, is, you know, is education, am I going to have good schooling? I think we could, we got that one. I think we have a, we could put a checkmark on that one. And then quality of life, where am I going to live? And the people that come from other parts of the country, are they going to get the same that they get where they're coming from? And so I think this really enhances this idea of taking us to the next level. So those are my thoughts, and as I'm viewing this, and I think it does merit that we take the right steps and really try to understand it. Like you said, we're not going to make a commitment, we're just trying to understand it. And I think it really merits that we get more information and partner with you in understanding the impact it will have in our community, especially from the economic development side, so.
Thank you, Judge.
And just to reiterate, Judge, so we're not asking, we're not deciding the funding issue, or even the donation issue at this point, but we're asking if this is something that the court wants to pursue and obtain more information about. I agree with you that I think this park would be very important for all of the reasons that you mentioned. But basically, we need to give guidance to our staff as to whether our staff can continue to work with Justin and his staff to really bring back to the court an actual formal proposal. So really, today, the question is just whether or not the court is actually interested in moving forward and really getting into the nitty-gritty per se of what a creation of this type of park would entail.
Justin, do we need a motion or a consensus?
Judge, can I ask some questions?
Go ahead.
Thanks. I just had a couple of, a couple of real quick questions. When we talk about, when we say world-class, what does that mean?
I think it means outstanding. You know, it's going to be a vague answer, forgive me. I really like to answer people's questions, and so when you ask me, I try to be deliberate in how I respond. Something that is well-designed, something that is constructed to high standards, something that is lasting, something that, in the long run, you know, installs, I think about landscaping as an example, that we would find, you know, the most appropriate things to plant, and that we wouldn't try to plant only sparsely, but instead completely. That when this facility opens, that people would recognize it as outstanding. And I want to be clear, because you might think that that then is a comment about anything else that has been done in the past, and that's not our point. But for a regional park like this, to achieve the goals that we've articulated, I think it needs to be ambitious. And so maybe that's another great word for it, is really an ambitious project that stands out.
Okay. You know, I really, I really wish all of our parks, all of our county parks could, would have that same, we'd have that same vision for all of our parks. And I could, I can definitely, you know, if we're going to do this and we have to go out to bond for it, we're going to have to convince voters that, you know, that we're doing the right thing. And I know a question that's going to come up is, well, y'all don't even take care of Ascara de Park and invest in Ascara de Park. What should, what should be invested in Ascara de Park? Why are you, you know, talking about another facility that is going to be, going to take a significant amount of investment? So I just want to put that in everybody's, in everybody's, the back of y'all's mind, because I know that that question is going to come up, especially with the folks that I, that I represent, right? And so is this, this is, this is in the master plan?
The park specifically is not, but the goals that were laid out in the master plan that talk about long-term planning for additional community and regional parks, that is specifically in there, and this area is specifically covered. I don't know if anyone has the master plan presentation, but it's actually page 21.
Okay, so I mean, it would be a good idea then, I think, to incorporate it into the master plan at some point, right?
Yes.
If that's, if we're going down this road, just to make sure that the public understands that it's going to be part of that. And then I guess we, you know, do we have, do we, I know we're not talking about, we may not have the numbers yet, but do we have any type of ballpark figure as to, you know, how much Hunt is offering to pick up with the costs, how much the county is going to have to, you know, how much it may cost, and also operational maintenance of the park? Do we know, do we have any ballpark figures on those?
The numbers are, I mean, admittedly, large. What does large mean? But I would be, it would be, I think, premature of me to, and I haven't put a pen to paper yet, to identify what is the land worth, what might all of the consulting activities be, what could the legal fees be? So I don't, I could make up some numbers at some level, frankly, that might be in the ballpark, but they might also be fairly wrong. So, millions of dollars for the construction of the park, ongoing maintenance, parks are expensive to maintain. There are examples of parks, and again, I'm not saying we ought to build a park like one that was built in Chicago, but as an example, we know these parks are expensive to maintain, but there are also ways to generate revenues by programming the park. And that's a little bit why, when I talk about maintenance, I talk about third-party maintenance, because there are magnificent ways to program parks and other type of amenities which generate fees. So until we do that complete analysis, you know, our hope, as we look into this, is that there are ways to minimize the annual maintenance cost to the county as we move forward. Again, that's why we need to evolve some of these questions, but not cheap.
Yeah, no, and I just want to make sure that we're going into this, you know, eyes wide open, and, you know, we have other parks that we have those types of, where we do those types of things, where we charge people to use the park, and it helps to phase some of the costs. But that's not always a very popular thing, right? I mean, people say, well, you use my taxpayer dollars to, I'm already paying taxes, and now you're charging me more. But, you know, Veronica Myers does a very good job of, you know, of explaining the different types of, you know, uses that parks have, and the different programming they have, and some that are premium and some that are not. And so I think we can, we can work on that, but I just want to make sure that that's, that that's brought up, that it's, that's something that we may be looking at, is charging more than just what you're paying in your taxes to use the park, right?
And that's the purpose of today, Commissioner, is if we want to continue with this exploration and to direct our staff to continue to work with Hunt.
No, and I definitely understand the idea behind the park, and of course, why the county would be interested in exploring it further. I think it makes sense to promote high-quality development everywhere that we work in the county, including in the unincorporated areas. One thing, one other thing that I just wanted to bring up is that I want to make sure that we're also thinking about sustainability when we're doing these projects. And, you know, we live in a desert environment, and, you know, a future of piped-in water, you know, for, quite frankly, is sometimes scary to me when I think about it. We're spending lots of money for this expansion in the east and west of the county, and in the northeast as well. You know, but when the aquifers run out, and we're even more dependent on the river water, assuming that that continues to sustain us, piping water from the east is going to be very expensive. I know that we're already starting to do that a little bit. And so, you know, those are larger issues that I feel like we need to also make sure that we grapple with at the county. I've brought it up in our strategic planning, you know, climate change and water usage. And I don't think we've done the best that we possibly can when it comes to talking about those issues and how, and how they play into our expansion planning. But I think it's important to raise those questions, and so I didn't want to let that, let that opportunity pass, because as every new development we approve, you know, every new road that we, that we build makes, makes an impact on that, right? So, but back to the, back to the park, I think that, again, that our park should be the best of quality, wherever they are, and I'm definitely willing to follow the process on this, to determine, you know, what funding amounts and sources, and how it's going to fit into our larger plan for county development generally, and parks specifically. So thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner, for the big picture. I think it's very important. These are, a lot of those discussions are what Commissioner Huguen wants to see us get involved into to more detail, but that sort of lays the framework of things that we need to, that we need to look at. And if anybody private wants to partnership with Ascara de, and you're out there somewhere, we'd welcome that as well, so.
And thank you for your, for your willingness to enter in this type of partnership, but it's, I think, good things can happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
So we need a vote or a consensus?
Yes, sir. You'll need a vote.
Just a second, Commissioner Loon, please.
Just real quick, Judge, thank you. This is basically a housekeeping thing for Betsy. I know it takes us, it takes our staff a long time sometimes to find out where these locations are at. In the future, I notice it in consent agenda a lot, that the Lordis, Lordis Development is going to do this, or we're going to do this. If you can have some location, assure that it is located in precinct three, located in precinct two, wherever it is, if you can make sure that that's there, it'll save the staff a long time in researching some of these items. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Great consideration.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion, Judge, to authorize our staff to continue to work with Hunt Communities, and to bring forward an agreement for the potential acceptance of this park donation.
Commissioner Huguen?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you both for your time. We look forward to it. A lot of discussions. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now go ahead and move into executive session.
We were, Miguel, is this a good opportunity? Because I know we're going to take a break.
It's up to you, Judge, but it'll just take us 20 minutes. It'll just take us 20 minutes.
Pardon me?
It'll only take us 20 minutes, so it's up to you, Judge.
Yeah, if you could do it now, thanks.
Okay, so Commissioners' Court will recess for 20 minutes. It is 11:41 a.m.
In El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name. El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Commissioners Court has reconvened into regular open session. Would you like to move into executive session at this time Judge?
Yes, please.
Commissioners Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 22A through 22G pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.074. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action.
Most of us have pets and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set up for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks, we do foster transportations, we do adoptions, we do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain, it's bigger than the city actually, but the houses are kind of sporadic, it's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county. From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of seventeen hundred and sixty-nine animals, of which two hundred and thirty-one were returned to their owners and four hundred and eighteen were adopted. After giving the men information about the spay and neuter services, Erickto takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home and it's a big foster affiliate of ours. They help us a lot with our transition, so these dogs don't sit food at the shelter at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Erickto drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce. With seventy-two percent of our population being bilingual, we stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers seventy-four bachelors, seventy-four masters and twenty-two doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name. El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Most of us have pets, and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set off for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture, and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks, we do foster transportations, we do adoptions, we do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain, it's bigger than the city actually, but the houses are kind of sporadic, it's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county. From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of 1,769 animals, of which 231 were returned to their owners and 418 were adopted. After giving the men information about the spay and neuter services, Ericko takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county, where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home, and it's a big foster affiliate of ours. They help us a lot with our transition, so these dogs own, set food at the shelter at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Ericko drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business, but we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Most of us have pets, and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set off for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture, and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks, we do foster transportations, we do adoptions, we do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain, it's bigger than the city actually, but the houses are kind of sporadic, it's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county. From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of seventeen hundred and sixty-nine animals, of which two hundred and thirty-one were returned to their owners and four hundred and eighteen were adopted. After giving the men information about the spay and neuter services, Ericko takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county, where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home, and it's a big foster affiliate of ours. They help us a lot with our transition, so these dogs own, set food at the shelter at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Ericko drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce. With seventy-two percent of our population being bilingual, we stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers seventy-four bachelors, seventy-four masters, and twenty-two doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Most of us have pets and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set off for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture, and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks, we do foster, transportation, we do adoptions, we do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain, it's bigger than the city actually, but the houses are kind of sporadic. It's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county. From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of seventeen hundred and sixty-nine animals, of which two hundred and thirty-one were returned to their owners and four hundred and eighteen were adopted. After giving the men information about the spay and neuter services, Erickto takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home, and it's a big foster affiliate of ours. They help us a lot with our transition, so this dog's own set food at the shelter at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Erickto drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce with seventy-two percent of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large U.S. cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the U.S.-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers seventy-four bachelors, seventy-four masters, and twenty-two doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Just a second, please.
Commissioner's Court has reconvened to a regular open session. Item 7A, Presentation. Receive presentation from the county's financial advisor regarding current market conditions and the county's long-term debt portfolio.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. Jessica Garza with Budget and Fiscal Policy. I would like to introduce Mr. Brad Aengst from Steeple, our financial advising group, to present third quarter debt and market update. Brad?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Judge and Commissioners, good to be with you. This is Brad Aengst with Steeple. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes, Brad. Thank you.
Brad, you have the out-of-focus filter on, just FYI.
See that? I'm not sure how to get it off, so... I'm going to speak to the presentation. I think I can get this done in just about ten minutes.
You're good to go.
Okay, thank you. Well, good to be with you all here this afternoon. There are a few things I wanted to focus on. Moving to page four of the presentation, we'll jump right into it. As Ms. Keller mentioned, there's a few opportunities coming up here over the next year, year and a half, based on your paydown of debt, your funding capacity, and the ability to keep your tax rate level and manage that process. So looking here on page four, I want to direct you here first off to the top left-hand chart. And this is just a recap of your tax rates over the last ten years. And so, of course, there in the middle, the MNO, the operational side of your budget, and then the INS relates to the debt service side of your budget. MNO, of course, has been capped at a smaller amount here by the state legislature recently, and so we're working within those confines in order to also be able to fund some of your ongoing maintenance, as well as some of the new projects that you may have coming up. And so I bring that up because a common practice and something available to you all as well in order to free up some of your operational budget and some of the capacity there, there is the opportunity to move some of the line items over to the INS side or that debt service side. And I point out here the INS side. Historically, we've tried to maintain that between four and five cents for the county at the direction of staff. Here in the last few years, we've dipped below that four-cent mark, or about 3.8 cents here recently. And as I'll show you here in just a couple of minutes, there's going to be a rather large decline on that coming up here in 2023. So, and just one final comment, I mentioned this idea of moving some operational budget line items over to the INS. When we issue bonds and we issue debt to finance some of these projects and maintenance, it's not always a twenty-year type of bond. We're not always talking about long-term debt options. You do have the ability to do, you know, as short as one year or out to five years with tax notes. So just because you're financing or you are funding with that debt service mill levy or tax rate, it doesn't mean you're going to be incurring a large interest cost. So finishing up on this slide, you know, the top taxpayers are, you know, some of the same names that we continue to see that you're probably familiar with. In the bottom left, we've charted out your assessed valuation growth. So that's the property valuations of all commercial and residential properties within the county. Continue to see good growth there. All right, I'm going to move along to the next slide, please. The current debt portfolio and profile. Nothing new to add on this slide at this time. We are working with the county currently on a water development board-type loan and also a debt obligation through the United States Department of Agriculture USDA-type loan. Once we get a little bit further along in that process, we will present those options to the court and provide a summary. Next slide, please. Again, another look at your debt portfolio. And what I want to draw your attention to here is the bar chart on the bottom. I had mentioned there's going to be a substantial drop-off in your debt payments. This was done very purposeful. We've actually been trying to build some additional capacity for the court and for the county here over the last several years. And then, of course, with COVID, we put a pause on some of those items, wanting to see stabilization in some revenues and to make sure you all didn't take on more than you could handle. But you'll see here there's a large drop-off in 2023 that relates to about twenty percent of your total payments or a reduction of about four million. So that represents when we can take on additional projects and fund large projects without increasing that tax rate in your current total payments. So typically, when you have a debt service reduction like that in '23, means that we're trying to finance and close on transactions usually in the '22 calendar year. We've got some options here to work with, but really, we need to work with staff, as you all aggregate and look at the different projects that come in from your departments, and really start to build out this plan of finance here in the springtime. All right, next slide, please. So the previous slide showed your general obligation and certificates of obligation, the bonds and project financings that have been repaid with abhorrent or property tax. You also have a couple of state infrastructure bank loans that go towards transportation, which of course use some of the vehicle registration fees. So we break that out just to show you that on a different page here. All right, next slide. This aggregates both the SIB loans and the GEO and CO bonds. Again, you'll see that large drop-off in '23. Then even out further in 2033, there's a complete drop-off of your projects and the payments. So just ten years out until that occurs, again, representing a tremendous amount of capacity that the county can handle when looking at your project list. All right, I'm going to move across to page 10 now. And so we've prepared a few different scenarios here to show you just how much you could fund, what type of projects, when you maintain certain levels of your tax rate. So this looks at the four-cent level of your INS tax rate. That's about the bottom of the range that we work with. When looking at this scenario over the next three years, the county could take on approximately $130 million of projects without going above that four-cent mark. This also leaves a tremendous amount of future capacity even beyond those next three years. If you were to do 130 million worth of projects over three years, you would still have the ability to take on new projects and maintenance projects beyond that. In the next slide, we show what happens if you get to four and a half cents. Again, right in that range where you have been historically. This allows you to get up closer to $190 million worth of project funds. And that could be accomplished again over the next three years. And then the last scenario on the next page is four and three-quarters of pennies. Next slide, please. And this one shows that you can get approximately $210 million worth of projects. Again, we've taken very conservative growth metrics for all of these scenarios. They all leave additional future capacity, and they all stay within that historical tax rate for the debt service side of four to five cents. Okay, let me pause there and make sure, see if you have any questions perhaps or have any feedback or we'd like to discuss any of those items before I get into a market update and let you know kind of where interest rates and supply and demand currently sit. Okay. There are none at this time. I can keep moving along. Okay, I'm on to slide 14 now. So we've seen a little bit of an increase in interest rates here over the last month or so. A lot of that's coming with inflation discussions. Also, a little bit of the demand is starting to come down on the municipal market. We still have a tremendous amount of inflows and cash flowing into muni funds. It's just not at the levels it has been over the past year. And you can see here in the top-left chart, there's a little bit of an incline starting to occur. And so the orange line there on top represents the thirty-year AAA borrowing rate. So the highest rating that you can get. And that currently still sits about a 1.69%, so very low borrowing cost still. When you look at the two-year range, it's down at, you know, about 0.25%. So when the county issues bonds, if it's for a new construction project, typically, we're looking at 20-, 25-year-type bonds. You blend these rates and you are getting very low cost of capital in the 1% and 2% range. There on the bottom left, that shows where these rates match up and compare against the past ten years of rates. And so those blue bars are where the range of the 30 and 10 and two-year interest rates have been over the last 10 years. And you can see we're still very close to the bottom in the historic 10-year low. So still a good time if you do have projects and to take those on and lock in a long-term fixed rate cost of capital. Okay, move into the next slide, please. Taxable interest rates. So the county has the option, of course, to borrow at tax-exempt rates. There's also the option to borrow at taxable rates. There's a little more flexibility in the use of taxable debt compared to tax-exempt when it comes to timing and project use, and we wanted to show you this as well. Taxable rates, you can see in that top-left chart, it's 193 for the 30-year. Really, not a whole lot of additional cost, about 30 basis points or closer to 25 basis points when you compare that to the tax exempt. So still very low in that market, still a lot of demand from investors and a good option for the county that we should evaluate if we pursue projects. Next slide, please. I mentioned supply and demand. We still have good supply and demand in the market. There's been inflows, as I mentioned. There in the bottom-right chart represents how much money is flowing into the municipal markets over a three-month period. And so you can see in the summer months, it was closer to 1.8 or 2 billion each week. Then here this fall, we started seeing that taper off a bit. Even with that, as I mentioned, we're still having plenty of demand in order to place bonds, to sell bonds, and to lock in interest rates. Next slide, please. Takeaway here, this is a look at where we forecast the future interest rates here over the next four quarters. And so we are expecting a little bit of an increase. On that bottom line of the top right-hand chart, you can see that 30-year, again, that I've referenced. You can see that 30-year, again, that I've referenced a few times now. We're expecting it to go up about a half a percentage point here over the next year. So just want to keep that in mind. If there are projects that are more ready to go than others, it may be worth considering splitting those out, looking to lock those in sooner than later. On the next slide, we show some of the activity of some of your peers here in Texas, some of the other bonds that are being done. Still pretty frequent issuances going on. And really, this current week we're in, it's not shown on this slide, but the last week or two, and there's a really big push here as we finish out the year. A lot of people trying to lock in these rates and projects. Some people are issuing debt to match some funds. They're using a blend of both grant and stimulus money with some bond funds to accomplish some big projects as well. With that, let's see, the next slide, I have an update on some more economic factors, including the labor market, GDP growth. We've considered, well, we've continued to see a good increase in the labor force. There was some concerns with inflation and recent news headlines, but we are starting to see some good payroll increases in the labor market. The economy, I think, you know, I'd like to finish up with some economic comments regarding inflation. It is the biggest item that we are focused on right now, as you've probably heard in the news, and maybe you're aware of there in the county as well, is we see, you know, double-digit increases now in some of the cost of used cars and trucks, gasoline, even groceries, eggs, and pork and beef. Those have gone up quite a bit. And so, yeah, we're seeing double-digit percentage increases on a lot of these, and it's something that, in this, you know, in this situation, we really would like to see some movement from the administration, from the Fed. They continue to call it transitory. And yes, some of the supply chain disruptions have caused some of these items, but at this point, we do feel it's something that we have to keep a closer eye on. It's going to continue to be a concern with some of the labor market as well, as people are demanding more salaries and wages in some of their, in some of those jobs. With that, I'll switch to the last slide I've prepared for you today. Or forget, I've got two more slides, but some of the items here in the Texas market as far as the economy that we wanted to point out. Of course, the border is set to reopen here soon with good, of course, that's going to have direct consequences there for the county, and hopefully, we see an uptick in some of the sales tax receipts, as well as some of the commerce going on there in the county. And then we're seeing some unemployment rates here in the state decrease as well, so we're pleased about that. In other news, there's some Bitcoin and blockchain technology that continues to move here to the state, buoyed by the electricity and the utilities supplies that can be made available to them here in the state. And then the last slide I have on page 22 here, and one of the big items that you've probably heard of is Senate Bill 13 and 19, at least as it affects the financial industry in our market. Senate Bill 19, of course, was the bill that required the state and other local governments and entities not do business with any bank or underwriter that discriminates against firearms. And then Senate Bill 13 was a further statement regarding the boycotting of fossil fuel companies. And so we've seen a little bit of a shakeup here in our industry with some of the big Wall Street firms not being able to do business. So, all right, I know I packed a lot in there. Hopefully, I kept it on schedule for you, Judge. I'd be happy to answer any questions or have any discussion at this point.
Just a correction on the second to last slide. You said the border is going to open next month. It's actually already open. You might want to change that.
Fantastic. That's great.
They opened on November 8th, yeah.
That's great.
Brad, great presentation. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. My pleasure.
Thank you.
Did we agree to break at 1:30?
Yeah.
Yes.
For an hour and a half, or what was it? Half an hour?
I don't know.
Did we agree on a, that we'll break for 45 minutes? Will that work?
I don't know.
Okay.
Hopefully.
Commissioner's Court will recess for 45 minutes. It is 1:29 PM.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Ericko drives away to a new mission. El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its animal welfare department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain. It's bigger than the city, actually, but the houses are kind of sporadic. It's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county. From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the animal welfare department rescued a total of 1,769 animals, of which 231 were returned to their owners and 418 were adopted. After giving the men information about the spay and neuter services, Ericko takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county, where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home, and it's a big foster affiliate of ours. They help us a lot with our transition, so these dogs own, set food at the shelter at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Ericko drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large U.S. cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Most of us have pets, and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set off for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture, and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks, we do foster transportations, we do adoptions, we do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain, it's bigger than the city actually, but the houses are kind of sporadic, it's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county. From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of 1,769 animals, of which 231 were returned to their owners and 418 were adopted. After giving the men information about the spay and neuter services, Ericko takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county, where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home, and it's a big foster affiliate of ours. They help us a lot with our transition, so these dogs own, set food at the shelter at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Ericko drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality, with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Most of us have pets, and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set off for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture, and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks. We do foster transportations. We do adoptions. We do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain. It's bigger than the city, actually. But the houses are kind of sporadic. It's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county.
It's a baby, right?
It's a baby. It's a month, two weeks.
From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of 1,769 animals, of which 231 were returned to their owners and 418 were adopted. After giving the men information about the spay and neuter services, Erickto takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county, where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home, and it's a big foster affiliate of ours. They help us a lot with our transition. So these dogs own, set food at the shelter, at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Erickto drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce. With 72% of our population being bilingual, we stay competitive among other large U.S. cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the U.S.-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Go ahead.
Commissioners Court has reconvened to regular open session. Item number nine, Commissioners Court, we do have a correction to read in for this item. Approve and authorize the waiver of entry fees to Ascara de Park two hours before each holiday lighting event for the community beginning December 4, 2021, for a Night of Hope honoring first responders and healthcare workers; on December 11, 2021, for the Santa Paus Pet Walk; and December 12, 2021, for the healing garden labyrinth installation by victims' families. Further authorize the acceptance of donations for the events pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 81.032.
Thank you. Veronica.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Betsy, Administration, everybody. Good afternoon. Again, we would like to have, we're kicking off the holiday lights with our Night of Hope on December 4. And again, we're asking for the, so that all of our community can participate in this fun activity, outdoor activity, and a healing activities. If we could waive the fees two hours before each of the events that we have coming up, and again, request donations from the public, which people have been calling, actually, and wanting to participate and contribute to events.
Okay, thank you, Veronica. Since this is your precinct, Commissioner Stott, any...
I don't have any questions. I think it's a good idea, and so I'll move to approve.
Second. Commissioner Olgin.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stott.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego is absent. Motion carries.
Thank you, Veronica.
Thank you. And again, I just want to say if anybody has a first responder out there, if they could please send us a picture and any message to, again, parksinfo@epcounty.com. Thank you. Have a great day.
Item number 12, County Administration. Receive a report and discuss and take appropriate action regarding the CARES Act grant, the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act 2021, and the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Ms. Garza.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. This is Jessica Garza, Judge of Public Policy. There are no changes in today's report for CARES funds. Expenses and purchase orders are at $24.5 million. Current commitments are just under $1 million, and the overall remaining funds total just over $2 million. $900,000 remains to cover ongoing PPE and operating costs, and $1.1 million are in the reserve account for the court's consideration. We continue to work with the auditor and other departments to close out purchase orders and monitor the subrecipient agreements. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Just real quick, the overall change, it shows it highlighted in yellow, but there's nothing there. Does that mean that it's zeroed out?
There's no change. The highlight just kind of stays on the report week to week.
Okay, thank you.
So it is zero. There's zero change.
Thank you. You have no questions. I appreciate your presentation.
Next is the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Report. There are no changes to this report as well. Commitments remain at $10.8 million, and expenses total $20.3 million. And I'm available for any questions you may have.
No questions either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 13. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding El Paso County's preparation and response for COVID-19.
Betsy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have Dr. Hector Ocaranza on the line. Dr. Ocaranza?
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to bring another update on the COVID-19 situation. And currently, we're at stage number two on the dashboard, which it is mainly because of the high rise of the new cases. And also, we continue to see a rise in the hospitalizations. The vast majority of the new cases, as well as the hospitalizations, are due to the unvaccinated individuals. And it is a more striking difference in those that are hospitalized. Unfortunately, we continue to see a steady inclining that, but we continue to provide the recommendation that people that haven't been vaccinated yet, they need to go and do so. There are multiple opportunities, and we're bringing the vaccination to make it more convenient to neighborhoods, to places where we are going to be capturing a lot more of the people. We continue to administer the booster dose, whether you receive the Pfizer, the Moderna, or the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, we continue to administer that. And Chief Rodriguez will mention some of those activities as far as vaccination. We're hoping that we can see an increase in the amount of testing that we've been doing, because it has been low. And one thing to note is that a good percentage of the new cases are in the pediatric population. We need to definitely now take advantage of the vaccine that is available for 90, I mean, for five years to 11 years of age, but also for those that are 12 years of age and older that haven't received the vaccine and continue to go to school. We continue to strongly, strongly recommend that they get it. We strongly recommend that people continue wearing their masks, particularly if they're unvaccinated. That's the way that we're going to be protecting each other. And we're seeing also a number of respiratory viruses circulating in our community. Among those, there's the influenza and also the RSV, which are typical to see right now. And those definitely cause a lot of the respiratory symptoms that we're seeing in the schools. So along with getting your COVID vaccine, please, we recommend that everybody gets a flu shot as well. And continue practicing prevention. That's the most important thing. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Doctor, I've got, I've got a question. As, as we see the breakthrough cases increasing, I think for yesterday or the day before, it was over, well over 500. Is there a mounting concern over those breakthrough cases?
Well, we do see some increase in the, in the breakthrough cases, and those that you're going to be seeing more are going to be in the cases, but not as much in the hospitalized. So that talks that the vaccine is working and keeping people away from the hospital. And that is also another reason why we're giving the booster shot. There's a lot of the population that have the diabetes, the hyp lip pressure, obesity, or many other chronic medical conditions that qualify to receive the booster shot, but also those that receive the Johnson &amp; Johnson, everybody who's 18 years of age and older can get the booster shot. And, and that is a good indication. And, and thank you for the question, Commissioner Leon, because that is, that is very important. And it doesn't minimize the, the positive effect of the vaccine, but speaks about the need for the booster dose.
Thank you, Doctor. Commissioners, we appreciate your report, Doctor, and hopefully the chief is on, on next after you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Betsy, and everybody being from home. So just a brief update on where we're at in terms of some of, some of the logistics and operational aspects of this COVID response. So just quickly on the numbers, as you all know, we adjusted the percentages were impacted when they added the 5 to 11-year-olds. So the numbers that we had been carrying for several months did decrease just because of that additional population. So currently, we're at 82.04 for individuals five years of age and older, fully vaccinated. We're at 68.68. And then we continue to do very well with our population over the age of 65 with one dose. We're at 99.9, and fully vaccinated at 90.78. So we continue to do very well there. Approximately 15,000 vaccines were administered last week. So we do see an increase from previous weeks now with that additional population of 5 to 11. So we continue to see good trends there. Some of the vaccine pop-ups and different events that we've been targeting specifically for, for that new age group of 5 to 11 years of age. Last week, we had a kids' day at the George Perry Mega Site location. That brought in approximately 195 5 to 11-year-olds and 28 12 to 17-year-olds. We also conducted our, a preliminary pop-up site at the Paso del Norte Port of Entry. And for a very short period of time between 11:00 and 3:00 p.m. this last Saturday, we did 200 vaccines. So we're definitely looking at expanding that program at the various ports. More information will become available as, as we start to solidify some of those dates and times. Also, in the rural areas, we've been working closely with some of the school districts. Last Friday, we had a pop-up event at Favens Middle School out in Favens, Texas. We also, beginning this week, we have two additional vaccines in rural areas. One is going to be occurring at Childress Elementary School in Vinson, and then another one at Horizon, Horizon High School out in Horizon on, on November 20. The date and more, more information is on epcovidvaccine.com. If you scroll down to the bottom of the page, you will have a calendar of events that show all the upcoming pop-up events throughout the county. All of those are appointment-free. If you choose to get your vaccine at one of our clinics, those are by, by, by appointment, and also those at the convention center. And we still have the convention center. Our four clinics are still in operation, and then we still have the George Perry Mega Site that, that's operational. In terms of testing, we have seen a, a increase in testing, just like Dr. Ocaranza said, that, that aligns to what we see when, when we do see an increase of community spread. So we continue to provide the three mega sites at the Don Haskins Recreation Center on the west side, the UTEP testing site down in the downtown area, uptown area, and then we have the county sports park testing off of Saragossa. That's still available. So all this information, of course, continues to be on epstrong.org. If there's any requests for flu vaccinations, that program is still available, and that's at www.bpowerflu.com. And then, of course, these ongoing pop-ups and coordination efforts with all the larger providers continue, and that's available on epcovidvaccine.com. If y'all have any questions for me, I turn it back. Thank you.
Commissioners. Chief, I've got one. I know that when I received my booster a couple of weeks ago, there was a, a line and people waiting to get their boosters, but I haven't seen the big rush that we experienced initially with our, with our, our first vaccines. Are, are you seeing the same thing?
So for, for the boosters, that's correct, Commissioner Leon. We, we didn't see a, a big rush for that. We have seen, I think, a larger response for the, this new population between 5 and 11. So we're, we're tracking that. And then we're also looking at the implications of, of the border opening. So we're, we're looking at those numbers to see if we can see how much of an impact that, that's going to be creating at, at, just at the city sites. We can't account for all the providers, since they all individually report to, to the state. So, but we'll, we'll keep the court appraised at that.
And, and I'm really glad to see that you're out at, at the bridges. And I don't know that we have anybody out on the Torneo Bridge, but there are thousands of kids that cross over every day to attend school here. So hopefully, we're catching the majority of those.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, absolutely. And then just great efforts by some of our community providers to target the schools directly. I think that's going to be the, the primary means of, of focusing on that 5 to 11-year-old, and then also those that, that are in the teenage years and that are coming on, coming over on their own. So those, those resources will be made available there.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate your presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Leon, are there any updates from members of the court, starting with yourself?
No new updates from me.
Commissioner Stott? Commissioner Robinson?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Olgin, I think I saw a no.
No.
Okay. That concludes this item.
Thank you, Betsy.
There will be no action for item number 13. Item number 14, purchasing. Approve the purchase of County of El Paso Downtown Annex Phase II A and B Tenant Improvements Using Region 19 JOC 21-7411 Awarded to Jordan Foster Construction LLC of El Paso, Texas. Phase A: $3,224,060.59. And B: $3,308,317.47. For a total of $6,723,527. Purchasing approved on October 27, 2021. Funding is available in CP Downtown Building Renovation.
Mr. Lopez?
Good afternoon. For the record, Jose Lopez Jr. is inter purchasing agent.
Hold on a second.
I was just going to ask, do we want to read in item 20 as well, since it's on the same? Would that be a good idea, you think, Christina?
Though first on the...
On, on the, on the first one? Yeah. Okay.
I can read in item 20. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the fixed-price construction contract between owner and contractor with Jordan Foster Construction LLC for the Downtown Annex Phase II A and B Tenant Improvements in the amount of $6,723,527. Pending county attorney review and approval. Funds are available in CP Downtown Building Renovation, contract number 2021-0908.
Okay, thank you. Back to Mr. Lopez, number 14.
Yes, sir. This is for the remodeling and upgrading of the Raymond Theis Academy Building located on 320 South Campbell Street. This was let out using the Region 19 contract. They were, it is a job order contract, and they were the best provider for this. We recommend the approval of this contract for the El Paso Downtown Annex Phase II A and B to award... and B to awarded to Jordan Foster Construction for the amount of three million, two hundred twenty-four thousand, sixty dollars and fifty-nine cents, and for Phase B, three million, three hundred and eight thousand, three hundred seventeen dollars and forty-seven cents for a grand total of six million, seven hundred twenty-three thousand, five hundred twenty-seven dollars. We request your approval.
Commissioners? Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Twenty.
Thank you.
I think I see Kevin McCary's hands up there.
Kevin?
Hi, Commissioner. I'm sorry, I think I just heard it. I wanted to make sure you had a separate vote for item twenty, since it was also written.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Lopez, back to you.
This actually, Commissioners, this item is actually Norma's item. I'm not sure if she's on, but this is, or Melina, this is the actual contract. Melina, do you want to go over that?
Yes, of course. Today, we present the contract for the tenant improvements related to the new downtown annex. During phase one, you previously saw that, the project took the building down to its concrete skeletal form. And so under these new phases, we're actually going to do a lot of major interior improvements and some exterior ones as well to beautify and secure the area. At this time, we are asking the county judge to sign the contract to allow for these construction improvements to begin. Is there any questions?
Yes, Melina, I've got one. The amounts are the same. Is there an additional cost?
No, they're the same. They're just split for the purposes of, you know, purchasing and their requirements. And then some items are expedited, as in when we need to release the funds for those. It's more of constructability at this point for those items.
I've got a question. I don't know if this, if you can answer this, Ms. Manuelos or Betsy, but I know that, Betsy, we've had some discussions with you in my office about artwork and utilizing this space for public art, and I was wondering if that is going to come in during this phase right now, or is that something that we need to discuss at a later date?
Sorry about that, Commissioner. This is actually for the reconstruction of the building and not for the actual artwork. So I do know there is, we have discussed the potential of using this building for a grant art project that Norma is looking into, I believe, for the Green Hope Project, Commissioner. We are analyzing whether this building would be a candidate for that project.
Okay, so this is just construction, it's not actually the aesthetics, I guess, of the building itself?
It's the external facade, but not for the art project.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. I don't know if there's any other questions, but I'll approve, move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to the regular order, item number fifteen, litigation, justice, and law enforcement. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Rio Grande Council of Governments FY two thousand twenty-two Law Enforcement Training Initiative Interlocal Agreement with the El Paso County Sheriff's Office from September first, two thousand twenty-one through August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, in the amount of one hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. Contract number twenty-two-one zero-eight-nine-nine.
Betsy, do we have somebody from the S O?
Yes, sir. Lieutenant Liedem?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, we can't see you.
This is an agreement, sir, with the Rio Grande Council of Government that has been an ongoing agreement where we provide training to the region. Basically, it's the six western counties in Texas.
Move to approve?
Second.
What type of training is it?
Law enforcement training, sir.
No, I understand it's law enforcement training, but is there something specific that, some specific curricular or specific type of law enforcement training that is, or is it just general law enforcement training?
We provide a lot of the mandated training that is required by the state, but if they request anything specific, we look at trying to provide that also.
Okay, so it's more general? Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you, sir.
Item number sixteen, information technology. We are asking for a postponement of three weeks for this item. The item is approve and authorize the county judge to sign lease agreement documents between the County of El Paso, Spectrum Technologies, and Dell Financing Services. Funds in the amount of five hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred forty-two dollars and ten cents are available in General Fund I T D Rent Leases Hardware, contract number twenty-two-one zero-eight-four-six.
Now, we're asking for a postponement of how long?
For three weeks. Our next meeting will be December sixth.
Move to approve the postponement?
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seventeen, Public Works. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the proposed amendments to the El Paso County Real Property Donation Policy and Procedures as outlined in the attached policy draft. Further provide direction regarding various pending property donations. Opinion number two-one dash one-two-three-three.
Jose?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Betsy. Jorge Morales with G I S Planning, with the Planning and Development Department. We bring this item to you on proposed changes to the real property donation policy and procedures. Texas Local Government Code authorizes county commissioners to accept donations of real property for the purpose of performing a county function. This policy provides a process for those interested in making a donation of real property to El Paso County. In two thousand thirteen, the Public Works Department was tasked with the responsibility of handling and recommending these real property donations to Commissioners Court. In March of nineteen, the County Commissioners Court added criteria to allow any property, regardless of its size, located within the city of El Paso's E T J to be accepted. This change resulted in a surge of donations for staff to evaluate. The policy previously required the donation to either be a large tract of land, three acres or greater, property at least half an acre that was located within the E T J of the city. The proposed amendment seeks to take the policy back to previous criteria, thereby not allowing donations if the property is not minimum of half an acre. There are changes throughout the document also that will iterate, reiterate the need to confirm that the donor has a legal right and authority to initiate the donation process. So this was some of the issues that we were facing, I guess, with that change in two thousand nineteen were the legal authority to donate on behalf of the people that submit their application, and staff time as well, which pretty much doubled the donations being presented to the department. Upon the slides here, you'll see the donations, I guess, that we have pending, and our recommendation for those. First off, we have the Pullin property. Michael Pullin is presenting this property. On this one, we would like to proceed pending more info from the donor. Otherwise, we recommend rescinding this donation. The next one. The next property is coming from the estates of Barbara and Charles Lewis. We also would like to proceed with this one pending more information. Otherwise, rescind would be our recommendation for this property. The next one. So this one is from Aldis B. Stotts. We actually recommend rescinding this donation as it's been donated to H C I. Next one.
What is H C I? Sorry.
That is the Horizon Community Improvement Association.
Thank you.
The next one is H N L Development. This one, we recommend proceeding with it with more info as well. Otherwise, rescinding this one, this particular up in the Waco area upon Waco Mountain. So it's a little different than the others, but we have other properties within this area that could probably benefit us in the sense of drainage issues up in the Waco Valley area. Next one, please. This one, we're proposing to rescind due to the paperwork. We don't have sufficient paperwork to accept this donation. This one here, the Snyder property, we are recommending to move forward with this one, again, with more information and considering possibly a quick clean deed from the donor. Next slide. This is the Craig property. We are proposing to proceed with this one with more info as well. Otherwise, rescind the property. Next, please. This is the Jones property. We would also like to propose proceeding with this one with more information from the donor. Otherwise, rescind. Next slide. This is the Isabel property. We also recommend proceeding with this one with more info and also considering a quick clean deed for this property. And then our last slide, which is the DeBachler property off of Horizon Boulevard there. We recommend proceeding with this with more info. Otherwise, rescinding the property. We had ten pending properties, two of which we are rescinding or recommending to rescind today, and the others pending more info or paperwork as well. We either move forward or will come back to rescind those properties. There's any questions that I can answer?
Jose, did you want to comment on these properties?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, Jose, on those, planning and development. So the item before you intends to do two things. The first item is to amend the policy, and the red lines were attached on your agenda backup. And you can see that, as Jorge mentioned, the intent is to revert back to the policy that was in place prior to March of two thousand nineteen. The change resulted in significantly more donations being presented, but we haven't necessarily seen a lot of those donations through because of the paperwork that is lacking for a lot of the donations to be made. So it hasn't provided the fruit that we anticipated, and so as part of our implementation of the policy, we're now providing feedback to the court and recommending a reversal of back to the pre-nineteen standards while also taking the opportunity to bolster the language with respect to whether or not the donor has the legal authority to do so, as was previously mentioned. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve the policy as amendments as presented. And then the second item doesn't necessarily require a motion, but just some general consensus and direction that we proceed with the donations that are pending as were presented. And then for those items that are still pending, information will continue to look through them and work with legal on that. If we are recommending that they be rescinded, we'll place an item on your consent agenda on the December third, excuse me, sixth Commissioners Court meeting to actually begin the rescinding process of those properties. So if, and the reason why we're asking the courts is that a number of those properties are only being considered for donation at this time because they meet the policy that we are now proposing to reverse, which is that they are small lots in size that don't generally, we wouldn't generally continue to recommend or evaluate for donation any further. We would just outright let them know that they don't meet the minimum criteria at this point, which is why we need the court's direction. If you would like to see us proceed as we recommend, or it's always the court's option to just let them know that we are rescinding, that we're revising the policy, and because of the revisions, we're no longer interested in their property donations, and we can let them know that.
Kevin, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Kevin McCary, Assistant County Attorney. Wanted to provide a little bit of legal context as to what the title problems are. Generally speaking, what we see is that these are properties that were often purchased in the nineteen seventies as part of various land schemes to sell isolated land at a profit. And the land is traditionally very little value. There's not a lot of tax value. And so what happens is the land stays in families for a very long time, and then the family member passes away. And what we're seeing is that the heirs are trying to dispose of this property by donating it, which makes perfect sense. But the legal problem that we bump into is that a lot of times the wills have not been formally probated, and they can't provide documentation like letters, testimony, showing that the executor is legally the executor or otherwise has legal authority to transfer title. And so you bump into problems where you may have siblings who have a hypothetical claim on the property. And so then the question becomes, you know, can we really accept it? At what level of risk are we willing to take that somebody could come back later on making a claim because we didn't, the person who donated it didn't have good legal title? And so those are the issues that we've been working through with Public Works for quite some time. So one piece of guidance you, or direction that you might give to us on the eight or so properties where there's still paperwork pending is how much more time to give the families to get back with us with the paperwork that we need before we come back to you recommending that we rescind those as well. I think it might help to, maybe not have a formal deadline, but just have some direction. You know, we need you to try to get back to us on these letters, testimony in ninety days, or one hundred twenty days, or if you have any direction about what might seem reasonable. None of this is easy, and we can tell the families what we need from them paperwork-wise, but we can't represent them, right? We're the county's lawyers, and even if we could represent them, most of them are probating wills that are in Washington State. We have one, I remember, from New Jersey. They're often outside of the state, and so we're kind of limited as to how far we can go in helping them.
Christina, this is very confusing, to me, anyway, insofar as how the court is supposed to vote. My idea as far as, I don't know what the other Commissioners think, but one hundred and twenty days seems to me very reasonable as far as time limit. I don't know, Commissioner.
That, I would be in agreement with that. And I want to thank Kevin and Jose. They met with me several months ago to discuss this issue. And so basically, what we'd be, prior to two thousand nineteen, we had more strict criteria about the land that could be donated to the county and what we would accept. In two thousand nineteen, we decided to do away with all the criteria and pretty much accept everything, and that's what's causing these issues. You have very small parcels of land, and then they have all of these legal issues about whether or not they've been probated, or the person who's trying to donate it actually has a legal authority to do so. And it basically just hasn't proven worthwhile for these really small little parcels. So what staff is recommending is that we go back to our pre-two thousand nineteen where there were more requirements, such as the size of the lot. So that presentation was very helpful to me in understanding the issue. So I would actually move to go ahead and accept the recommendation of staff and So, I would actually move to go ahead and accept the recommendation of staff, and make the policy changes, and go back to the pre-two thousand nineteen policy. And I think I agree also, Commissioner Leon, with you, that a hundred and twenty days notice for these eight pending cases is reasonable, so that the families can try to get us the documentation if they can.
Commissioners, a hundred and twenty days? Kevin, it seems like a hundred and twenty days is what the court is agreeing to. And now, if we go to what it was in two thousand nineteen, do we have to vote individually on these individual properties?
So, so for this particular item, as you just, you can go ahead, and what I'm hearing is that the court's ready to make an approval on the policy as recommended, so that would be your motion. And then, what's going to happen, as I understand it, is that staff will then come back, place these items in terms of those properties beforehand, and put them on the consent agenda. They'll have the backup, the properties will be in the backup in terms of an explanation, and then that's when you can take action. It'll be a kind of a collective process, not an individual-by-individual, individual assessment, quite frankly, for the interest of time and not clogging up your, your agenda. But, the information will be there in that consent agenda, but again, at a later time. Yes, sir. So, if you're ready to approve the policy, you can do so now.
So, I made the motion?
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Kevin, Jose, Jorge.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number eighteen. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the fixed-price construction contract between owner and contractor with Allen Concrete LLC for the El Paso Hills Channel Project, in the amount of one hundred ninety-five thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars. Funding is available in C I P twenty-one Public Works Admin Renovations. Contract number twenty-two-one zero-eight-eight-three.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Bernie Adonis with Public Works. Today, we're presenting the actual contract to be executed. This project was originally awarded by purchasing under the twenty, I'm sorry, bid number twenty dash zero twenty-eight in September of twenty-seven, and today, we're just bringing the contract so that the court can authorize a judge to fully execute the contract.
Move to approve?
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie.
Item number nineteen. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the fixed-price construction contract between owner and contractor with Allen Concrete LLC for the Oopsala Drive Drainage Improvements, in the amount of two hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred sixty-two dollars. Funding is available in General Fund, Road and Bridge Flood, C and T, Stormwater Improvements. Contract number twenty-two-one zero-eight-eight-four.
Good afternoon, once again, Commissioners. Bernie Adonis with the Public Works Department, and today, we're bringing the second contract to Allen Concrete, and this is for the Uppsala Project. And once again, this project was awarded under bid number twenty dash zero thirty-two to Allen Concrete in November first, and today, we're bringing the contract to be executed under the, the court's direction.
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you again, Bernie.
Thanks a lot.
Item number twenty-one. Budget and Finance. Approve and authorize the reallocation of capital funds.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. Jessica Garza again, from Budget and Fiscal Policy. County Administration and staff have met and reviewed the capital and C I P project funding through the fiscal year twenty-one fourth quarter. Included in your backup are the worksheets, which identify the capital projects that have either been completed or are no longer necessary. This reallocation of funding has also been coordinated with the staff of the County Auditor's Office, as of the September capital project reconciliation. We request your favorable approval and authorization of this item to reallocate the funds to the unassigned object code for the future allocation consideration.
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-three. Discuss and take appropriate action on the El Paso County E H N Board of Trustees Appointments for the term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-two.
We have no action.
Item number twenty-four. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding litigation, Associated General Contractors of Texas et al. versus Ricardo A. Samoniego, in his official capacity as county judge, et al., cause number twenty-two-one D C V one-one-three-two, county attorney, case number zero-zero-six-eight-two-one L D.
No action.
No action.
And I just have a couple more items. For items twenty-two E, and twenty-two F, and G, we are asking for these items to be deleted from executive session.
Tom of?
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries. And this completes all the items on today's agenda.
Thank you. Commissioners, remove your seat belts, we're done.
This concludes today's meeting at three-ten P M.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.